Good afternoon, everybody. This is a meeting of the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission being held virtually Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. We will begin with the regular meeting. We have no announcements and no postponements this evening. And so we will get go straight to the first item, which is Sutton Land LLC for a final site plan to propose the addition of sixty-one parking spaces to the existing Glenville Shopping Center at twenty-one Glenville Street. Mr. Hegney?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yesterday, you heard our comments.
I did. I did. So just wanted to say we have comments from the town engineer and traffic engineer. They have just a couple of items that we can address prior to the building permit. You asked about increasing the caliper of one of the trees, the yellow wood. I spoke with our landscape architect, Matt Pop, and he said that's not a problem to increase the diameter of that tree as well, along with the rest of them. The sidewalk on the east side of the building at tenant four, actually, there's a de facto sidewalk there now because people do walk around that side of the building. But we will add that as part of our construction plan, so there is a formal sidewalk on that side of the building. I wanted to mention that the parking spaces on the west side, the property, there are currently thirty-three parking spaces there. We're looking to add four to have a total of thirty-seven. That part of the property has overhanging canopy, which does shade those spaces already from the west side because there's a great deal of of tree cover there already. Obviously, the point of this is to have more parking spaces to attract a new supermarket to the space. And frankly, the supermarket chains that have reached out to us are looking for more parking, not less parking, even beyond what we have. We're trying to attract them to so that they know that this is a viable shopping center.
We aren't trying to reduce your parking. What we're suggesting is that you enhance the screening and the greenery. And what the finding was during our briefing meeting, the comment was that the western boundary would benefit from additional planting. It does not have to intrude. We would not expect it to intrude on the parking.
Thank you, Madam Chair, to that. And we do have additional shrubbery being planted along that west side to enhance that. We're increasing the plantings along the front of the property along Glenville Street. We've added additional trees in the plant beds that exist in the front of the building. And we've added additional trees on the west side where we're putting in the new parking. So we wanted to look good too and to function well.
I think the point we were also making at the briefing yesterday and is that with the new landscape regulations, you are also supposed to buffer commercial use from other uses in a neighborhood. So that was the other thing we're looking for you to do is that extra buffering and the languages in the landscape regulations.
And we do add a good deal of trees along the northerly side of the property, which is toward the residential portion of the lot and toward the residences. There was a question on EV chargers. And the question of whether your regulation reads the way you really want it to. And talking with my clients, since we're adding sixty-one parking spaces, we would look to add six charging stations for that, which would be ten percent of the parking that we're adding.
You would be and you would be amenable. And you would be amenable to adding those six spaces, the six chargers.
Yes, yes, right. I did point out to my client that there are people like myself who actually use those. The working with DPW on the traffic improvements for Glenville Street, we already have granted an easement to the town to put the traffic control equipment on our property. So we are working with Public Works and did grant that easement. I think it was earlier this year or later last year where we worked with them on that. And we're not adding any square footage as part of this. It's just what's there. And we would ask for your approval.
Anybody on the commission have questions or comments?
Mr. Hegney, the eastern line of parking, there's what thirty-plus spaces there along that edge?
There's currently thirty-three and we're looking to have thirty-seven.
Okay, thirty-seven. I see in the landscape plan that actually the new plantings along that area are shrubs. Let's see, what is it? Northern Bayberry? I think
Yes.
Our comment was based on you have a long line of parking spaces, parking space after parking spaces along that line. And that I think one of the things we would have appreciated was actually having maybe one or two of those spaces enclose actually a tree. So the trees aren't on the edge, but actually more adjacent to the parking spaces. The landscape plan shows that what looks like an oversized parking space, I'm not too sure if this part of the parking revision right at the bend where it goes from the twenty-six to nine spaces. That would have been a great place for a good park, a good tree to kind of stick out into the sea of asphalt.
Well, again, again, it's, you know, kind of, that's the kind of thing that's consistent with our new landscape regulations. So I think by asking the applicant to reevaluate what's in the landscape regulations regarding commercial parking, you would address that, Mr. Hegney.
Well, that is along the area where you do have a large canopy from the trees on the westerly side of the site, which do overhang the parking spaces now, and we would look to have all that remain.
It's great to have that all remain, but I'm saying that actually, you know, trying to get that canopy out into the asphalt, I think is the premise of the thought we've had, you know, for the as part of the landscape regulations, don't just, you know, put it on the edges, asphalt's in the middle, get it in and around the asphalt in the parking spaces. So I'm looking at a street view now of that. I can see the canopy, but again, it's the canopy that's there. It may overhang a little bit, but it's actually curtailed by the edge of the asphalt. And from the looks of it, you're actually going to be cutting back into a lot of that to get the new expanded parking lot. So you know how much of that actually is going to remain, so.
What you're looking for, Mr. MacRae, just to jump in is that you want them to look for any possibility of adding trees within the asphalt area itself.
Right, little islands of trees somewhere scattered about. When you, you have plenty of parking, so you ought to have plenty of room to add shade within the asphalt area.
Stop me, Mr. LaRoe, but didn't we leave it in the language of the landscape regulations that every X trees, every X spaces tree?
Yes.
Yes, so they comply with the new landscape regulations. When they add the parking, it's space, 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 tree.
Right.
So.
Every ten trees, every ten spaces, something like that.
Yeah, it isn't supposed to be on the perimeter. If we wrote that in a way that it's not clear to the applicant, then we need to rewrite that because our point was to space, 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 tree, and then that you can set that back. It's not meant to make you lose parking, but you can set those islands in so you don't lose parking.
So we're talking about the area where these are existing parking spaces. There are thirty-three spaces along that side. And it's just along the northerly part of that area where we're adding spaces and we are showing a tree in that area. If I don't want to adding the parking is extremely important to be able to attract a supermarket. And if it means sacrificing a space in the area where Mr. MacRae was referring to, I know the space he's talking about. So be it to have this approved because my client really needs to be able to show respective tenants that he can meet their requirements.
Okey dokey. So what I would say to you is that you're to evaluate adding trees within the overall asphalt parking area with minimal loss of spaces.
Consistent with our
Yes.
new regulation.
Okay, and we will leave you to work on that. What Mr. Hegney is saying is that he's working within the old, that the old regulations apply to the old parking. Where he's not changing.
I'm not adding, I'm not adding any spaces essentially from the building toward Glenville Street and Glenridge Road. There's no new parking being added there. And we are increasing there. There were two sort of scraggly trees in each of the two islands in the front of the building, and we're proposing four larger trees in each of those. So it's, and we're proposing more landscaping and trees along the easterly property line. So we're really improving this substantially.
Can we have the staff handle this?
Yes. Tracy? Madam Kulikowski, you're on it, right?
Yes, and I can work with Jackie. Yep.
Okay. All righty, any other comments? Does anybody, oh, wait, do we have any speakers from the public? Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this application at twenty-one Glenville? Please raise your virtual hand. This is an expansion of the parking at the shopping center in Glenville. Does anybody wish to comment on this application at this time? Seeing no comment is, does anybody oppose closing this application at this time? Seeing no opposition, this application is hereby closed. I'm going to make a motion on this application at this time. And it is the regular members who will be seated on it.
Madam Chair, I do not believe I'm seated on this. I think Mr. Wells is.
Yes, I apologize for that. Thank you, because that's why I made the motion. And it's Jenkins for Yaski.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so it's Wells. Thank you, guys. Wells for MacRae. And Jenkins for Yaski.
Yes.
Thank you, folks. All righty, and so now we go. As to the application of Sutton Land LLC for a final site plan to add sixty-one parking spaces to the existing Glenville Shopping Center by reconfiguring parking on the west side and adding spaces on the north side of the existing supermarket on a six-point-one-seven acre property located at twenty-one Glenville Street in the LBR two and RA one zones. Whereas on ten seventeen twenty-three, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a related zoning map amendment, which resulted in a net addition of one-point-three acres to the LBR two zone in which the Glenville Shopping Center is located. Whereas the proposed project provides a total of a hundred-and-seventy-nine parking spaces, including nine handicap. The parking lot as currently configured contains a hundred-and-eighteen parking spaces, including four handicap spaces, spaces as shown on the parking plan, which was prepared on August fifteenth twenty-three and revised on November sixteen twenty-three. With the addition of sixty-one parking spaces, the applicant is proposing to add more parking than is required by section six-one fifty-eight B of the zoning regulations and will be eliminating an existing parking nonconformity. Whereas there is no increase in proposed FAR or building coverage. Whereas the applicant submitted a parking needs study prepared by Labella Associates dated June twelfth twenty-three, which states that it is the considered professional opinion of Labella that the site with a proposed additional sixty-one onsite parking spaces will have sufficient parking to accommodate the needs of the site and will have the ability for both private vehicles and trucks to safely and efficiently maneuver in and around and out of the site. Whereas DPW Engineering Division issued comments on nine-twenty-seven asking for revisions to be resubmitted prior to the final site plan approval. Whereas the applicant has submitted a revised site plan, a revised drainage report and responses to the comments on eleven-sixteen twenty-three. Additional test holes were dug and the thirty-six inch storm drain was videoed. According to SE Minor, the drainage layout has been revised to reduce peak runoff discharge rate reductions up to and including the hundred-year storm event. DPW Engineering Division issued additional comments on twelve-seven twenty-three stating that the drainage summary report was acceptable in concept with revisions to be provided prior to zoning and building permit approval. Repair work on the pipes must be done prior to the issuance of a TCO or a CO. In addition, the eight-inch pipe along the curtain drain on the western portion of the site is required to connect to the twelve-inch RCP to prevent icing conditions, and the cultech units must be H-twenty rated. Whereas Traffic Division issued comments dated nine-sixteen twenty-three, finding the Labella Parking Needs Study and its conclusions acceptable while also recommending certain revisions to the site plan set. DPW subsequently commented on eleven-twenty-nine twenty-three requesting additional revisions be added to the final site plan and submitted prior to issuance of zoning and building permits. The revisions are related to curb ramp for the ADA parking space in front of the retail space number of retail C and retail D, and additional details for the proposed raised pedestrian walkway in the rear parking lot. Whereas the commission's traffic consultant Beta issued comments on nine-fourteen twenty-three asking for additional information to which the applicant has now responded, and that's as of today. Whereas DPW Sewer Division issued comments on nine-fourteen twenty-three stating that the applicant was required to submit a signed acknowledgement of Sewer Division comments, and the applicant has provided said acknowledgement letter on nine-fifteen twenty-three. Whereas DPW Sewer further requested that prior to obtaining a zoning permit, the applicant show all the town sanitary sewer mains and sanitary sewer manhole structures and submit such to the Sewer Division for review. The applicant was further asked to identify the various SMH structures on the north side of the building. Any adjustment to planned site grades or renovations to the supermarket building would require sewer permits. Further, the proposed stormwater drainage system may not conflict with or influence existing sanitary sewers. Whereas the inland wetlands agency permit needs questionnaire dated eight-twenty-one twenty-three indicates no IWWA permit is required. Whereas the zoning enforcement officer commented on nine-one twenty-three, the project is acceptable for zoning permit sign-off with the submission of a revised landscape plan. Whereas the Architectural Review Committee discussed the application November first, twenty-twenty-three and requested the applicant seek to create a harmonious landscape design coming off the street and also asked that the caliber of new trees be increased to three to three and a half inches. Whereas the applicant submitted a revised landscape plan dated eleven-thirty twenty-three incorporating ARC's comments. Whereas the landscape plan for the subject application must also comply with section one-sixty-one, section one-six, six-one-sixty-two of our landscape regulations. Whereas on twelve-eleven twenty-three, the tree warden commented that the landscape species selected and numbers are appropriate for the environment in which they will be planted and that additionally, the design intent of screening shading and native and non-native plant enhancement is good. Whereas the Conservation Department issued comments dated nine-fifteen twenty-three suggesting that the applicant prepare a tree inventory and an invasive species management plan, provide information on the amount of material ledge removal and revise the plan. Their comments also suggested the use of permeable asphalt or pavers for the new parking area and the provision of additional plant material to compensate for the loss of wooded area. The comments did note that the landscape plan consisted of a diverse list of species dominated by native plants, which will provide needed shade and improve the site's aesthetic and environmental values. Whereas the commission finds that the western boundary of the property would benefit from additional greenery and screening pursuant to the purposes of the landscape regulations. Whereas on nine nineteen twenty-three, the P and Z Commission and the applicant discussed adding a sidewalk to tenant four, which did not appear on the proposed site plan. Whereas the commission has requested and applicant has agreed to provide six EV charging locations onsite. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the subject application is hereby approved with the following modifications by which the applicant shall comply with all outstanding DPW Engineering Traffic and Sewer Division comments and requirements, address outstanding beta comments regarding the detail for the crosswalks and the pavement markings, revise the landscape plan to conform with all landscape regulations, particularly those that apply to commercial parking lots and the required screening between residential and commercial uses. Consider adding trees within the overall asphalt with a minimal loss of spaces. Utilize three to three and a half caliber inch caliber trees for all new plantings. Provide six EV charger spaces in the parking lot. Add a sidewalk next to tenant four that appears to already have been in there and address any others outstanding department comments. Do I have any adds or changes to that? Okay, I know it was long and boring.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
A question that on those caliber trees, you said, would you repeat that?
Three to three, it's three to three and a half inches and ARC requested that, and the landscape plan was revised to increase it to three to three and a half. They were less originally.
I thought it was, I read it as three, that was to be changed to three and a half.
Yeah, I checked it and it's three to three to three and a half. Mr. Hegney.
Are they all going to be three and a half? I'm just confused.
It's the caliber to which they've agreed is between three and three and a half because you can't get exactly three and a half, you see.
I do see, I would have made it three and a half to four, but okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
The trees in the original landscape plan were two and a half to three. The asked they'd be increased from three to three and a half.
Got it, thank you.
All right, do I have a second or any other comments?
Just quickly, Madam Chair, do you feel the ADA comments are reflected in your general comments about, you know, meeting all the DPW requirements so we don't have to say anything specific?
I think so, because they're required to do it. Tracy, did you feel that we sufficiently addressed that, that I sufficiently addressed ADA?
Yes, because when it comes back for any additional sign-offs, we'll go through all the comments and make sure they're all addressed. Staff will.
Great, thank you.
And with that, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wells is second, and Ms. Jenkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Mr. Lowe?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye. Did I get five?
You got most of them.
Okay. And Mr. Levy, Mr. Levy?
Aye.
There you go, all right. With that, the motion passes five, nothing. I hope that doesn't augur badly. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Now Kelly, we're ready to begin the public hearing and we met our obligation to you, twenty-five minutes.
Wow, that was fast. Okay, great. Do you need me to start my video or not?
No, it just, you know, just speak up anytime you have any issue with anything we're doing.
Okay, great, thank you.
So we hereby open the public hearing. Our first application is number two, Fairview Country Club for a final site plan and special permit to install a pergola system with a louvered roof across the entirety of the pool terrace at twelve forty-one King Street. Is the applicant here?
Ms. Dursa.
All righty. Okay, in we go. Hello, Ms. Dursa, if you would unmute so you can proceed.
Aye, yes.
Thank you. Hi.
So I have a presentation that's the same one that was shown previously. Would you want me to pull that up?
No, actually, I think usually, so I read the description of what the project is. It's just a pergola over the entirety of the roof terrace. And there is no change in your parking or your parking demand. There is no change in your members. There's no change in your building or your coverage because it's over an existing impervious surface. What were the questions? Yesterday, there was one question, those are louvers that open in the roof?
Correct, yeah, I heard that and it looks like it's solid, but it is a louvered thing. It's just the way that the rendering looks.
Any other questions from the commission?
No.
Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? Seeing no one from the public raise their hand, does anyone on the commission object to closing this application at this time?
No.
All right, this application is hereby closed. Ms. Dursa, you can enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Afternoon, whatever you want to call it. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Bye bye.
Bye.
All right, our next application in the public hearing is Maria and Stephen Harris Rubino for a final subdivision. This is to subdivide a forty-three thousand five hundred and forty-five square foot lot into two parcels at nineteen Lakeview Drive in the R-12 zone representing the applicant.
SE Minor, and they're joining us right now.
Okey dokey. Hi, SE Minor. For the public record, before you begin to speak, would you rename yourselves where it says SE Minor so that Ms. Cohen, our court reporter, can note your names for the record?
Absolutely. I was trying to do that earlier. I wasn't sure.
Okay, there you go.
Now.
Rachel Orsi and Abed Yaku. Okay, so that should be good. I hope if Ms. Cohen has a problem with it, she'll let us know. All right, you heard there was a great deal of discussion at our briefing yesterday regarding this application. It might be easiest if you give a very short overview and then you begin to address the questions the commission raised. We also received a lot of public comment on this application or some public comment. There is, the neighbors on the cul-de-sac wrote one letter. So we would like you to address all that if you would proceed.
Absolutely, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Rachel Orsi from SE Minor.
Abed Yaku, PD from SE Minor.
So a little bit of overview about this project. We are applicant proposing a re-subdivision of nineteen Lakeview Drive. It was originally part of the subdivision from nineteen forty-six, which is when the lot was originally created. Our proposed subdivision today meets town standards and will result in a two-lot subdivision that also contains an open space parcel of fifteen percent of the total area. Like Madam Chair said, hopefully today we can answer some questions and comments that were brought up both in the briefing yesterday as well as in the staff report provided by Jacqueline Pruitt. And we understand that also some additional materials have been requested and we will happily begin to prepare those documents in preparation for next meeting.
All right. So there were several major considerations. I'm going to just touch on, it seems you've done the drainage plan based on a pre-existing situation in which was prior to the lot having been cleared of its vegetation and fill having been brought in. The commission had some questions on, first of all, you would have to redo your drainage plan. And then second, we were wondering about the quality of that fill, whether a fill permit was obtained and whether the fill was tested, what the quality of what kind of vegetation it would support. Because as you propose an open space for this same area, am I asking too many questions at the same time?
No, no.
Okay, so I'll last the last one since you're proposing since you're proposing an open space, you would need a restoration plan for this open space. And as such, we would need to know how that proposed open space will enable native plant species, et cetera. The concern raised by Uh, the concern raised by staff is that at this point it may only support invasives. So if you would just run with those points.
Sure, I will. I will try my best to hopefully answer all those questions. Um, so we under, we have proposed, um, a planting plan with the original application um, to plant out the open space parcel. Uh, the, we have reviewed briefly with our client, the idea of converting the planting plan into a restoration plan to, um, include the remediation of invasive species that have unfortunately taken over part of that area. And the client, um, is very amenable and is very on board. He was ready to start removing the invasives today. Um, so he's definitely, um, hoping to to fix that situation. Uh, but a little bit of background, um, on this site. So our client had purchased the property, um, last spring. Um, and then soon after, I think last summer, had hired a tree company to come out and um, do some removals or have some trees removed on the property, uh, clearing part of the the trees there. Um, and we have, um, the receipts from the tree clearing. And during that visit, the stumps were ground and the woodchips were spread around, which may have resulted in it in looking like some, um, site development or or fill brought on site, but we were, um, very clearly, our client very clearly stated to us that he had not brought any fill to site, um, and that and that just kind of nixed that right away that they had not brought any fill. Um, and we also have done some, we had begun doing some, uh, an additional, uh, research after hearing it in the briefing yesterday, the idea of fill, just to verify, um, as well. And have, uh, looked at records, both our, uh, records from topography as well as some of the town's records and to compare to see if there has been any, um, any change in that area that may be evident of fill being brought on site. And so far, we have not found any evidence that the topography in that area has changed. Um, just that there were some trees removed and and the in the stumps were ground, um, in that area. So hopefully that addresses any concerns. I know fill, um, is is a large concern and we ourselves were um, hopeful that there weren't, that there wasn't any fill brought on site and we were assured that that there wasn't any.
So what you're, it were, you're saying to us that was what what appears to be filled after the, after the lot was clear cut, instead, um, wood chips were spread.
Correct, the the wood chips, um, that resulted from grinding the stumps.
I see.
So some occasionally you can have the wood chips hold off site. Um, but in order to to kind of maintain the natural material that that was part of the tree, um, it's it's kind of practice to just grind the stump into the ground so that way you keep the nutrients and, um, and everything part of the soil. So, um, we believe that unfortunately invasive species, um, have have done what they do best. Invaded part of this area because they saw an opening, um, but but we
Right.
Um, with the planting plan that this area is still, uh, sufficient to, um, to allow for native species to re-inhabit this area.
Can I interrupt?
Of course.
Question. Do we have, uh, maybe this is for Patrick or maybe Nick, I don't know, uh. Do we have any historical evidence of the change in this topography beyond just the spread of wood chips?
Are you asking, uh, we have data to to certify that that has not happened? Or are you saying, do we have evidence that there was something before the woodchips arrived?
Yes, they're both questions.
That's cool. Well, I I don't think we have, unless there was some wetlands inspections or anything, I don't know if we have uh, eyewitness accounts by town agencies about what happened. We do have, uh, if we don't have associated geography in the G I S, we may have plans for some of the houses in the area, the road, et cetera, that may have shown some of the topography prior and we we can absolutely, you know, review that and corroborate. But I, as as to specifically the area that of concern, I don't know if we have all the, um, the survey data that we would have now with the current plans.
Uh, Mister Orsi, the, uh, existing conditions plan is part of the development set. This is, uh, page, uh, sheet three, number, number three. Has the existing topography. Is that the, as Mister Lowe is looking for, the existing topography of uh, the existing soils and slope? Or is that taken on top of the wood chips?
Good question. So, um, this is, uh, after the trees, um, and and the wood chips were registered. So after the tree removals, so we had conducted this to have this topo in May of this year. And the trees were removed, I believe, in June of last year. Um, so our existing conditions is is after the trees were removed. But similar to, uh, Mister Lowe's question about previous topography in the area, part of our research, um, in terms, uh, to understand if fill was brought in, we looked at, um, from the town G I S. I believe they, um, they do aerial G I S every five years is is about how often they update their information. So we went back to the last, um, time the aerial G I S was taken, which was in two thousand sixteen and compared it to the most recent, which was of two thousand twenty-two. And then compared it to our topography taken in two thousand twenty-three. And upon, um, initial review, we found that the topography was consistent, um, between all three. And we'd be happy to to share that information, um.
How many trees were, uh, removed roughly?
I, I'm not sure at this time.
Have we turned that hundred?
Previous to when we were brought on.
Okay, Mister Mister Lowe, I have a, I may have a solution to that question.
Yeah, well, I'm I'm wondering, just just let me finish it. I'm wondering whether these, um, aerial views would obscure the topography if it was heavily wooded.
Um, well, they, there, there's, it's a, the technology should not be that affected by, uh, by the trees, but, um, again, the, it is associated, um, geography, so to speak. And it's not going to be as accurate as surveying would be. So, uh, if there were a few inches of mulch being thrown around the site, you know, it 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 one, it might not be caught by a surveyor, but it may, it definitely probably will not be caught by the, um, the overall flown, um, geography.
Right, but I, as you know, I'm not really referring to a, a, a little bit of mulch thrown around, a couple of inches. We're talking about whether or not there was some appreciable addition of fill. That's the issue, is it not?
Right. It is, and we can, we can make some assumptions based on what we have, but again, if 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 it's close, uh, you know, we 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 do have to, you know, trust that the survey equipment is is more accurate than ours.
Ms. Jenkins, did you have a comment?
Uh, yes, I was gonna ask, I mean, to the extent that the current surface is wood chips. Is there particular concern about soil, soil handling and erosion, um, on that property?
Yes, I would think so, because actually, if you look at the, this is just simple Google. If you look at the Google aerial view, you can see the denuded site completely. And then actually go into street view, you can see the difference between what was there before and what's there now. It's, it's quite striking. Uh, Tracy, if you have an opportunity to dig that up for us, that would be great because it's, it's very interesting to see what was there before. A lot of mature, uh, uh, evergreen trees, et cetera. And right now, it looks like from what I'm seeing, uh, which is, I think, believe it could be this summer, it's all gone and I see some wood chips, but not all over the site.
If I may, just briefly, I would say I don't think the wood chips would cause, um, a much different effect than what would a mulched site. Um, so if somebody had some landscaping that had some mulch, it it results.
Well.
But but I'm more concerned about the stability. I mean, this is, as I understand, that there's quite a, quite a hill here. And you're saying, okay, we cut down the trees and put down the mu- the mulch, the chips, but it's on a hill. And when you have rain, presumably it's going to affect not only the, the, um, the drainage from that, but just the stability of the property. That's my concern.
Absolutely, and we completely understand. I think that's why Abed and his engineering team has worked, um, significantly with, uh, D P W also to address any stormwater concerns, but also, um, the planting plan provided. Um, hopefully it remediates, re-vegetates and helps stabilize this area. Um, and hopefully this this plan overall just really, um, and it makes a better situation of what's there currently.
Okay, the the problem with landscaping obviously is that that's not going to be a short term answer though. If you've got any sort of erosion or soil use issues, the landscaping is gonna take a couple of years to stabilize that.
Exactly. Nick, Mister Mac.
Uh, you know, in our briefing package, uh, page nine of the staff report, there's a, a G I S. I'm not too sure whose that is. I think it looks like ours, provided by, I think, maybe Engineering Division. It shows two elevation lines, one of fifty, one of sixty, which are approximately the same as on the existing conditions provided by, uh, Mister Yakub and, uh, Miss Orsi. So it looks that the existing conditions may be similar or if not the same, but what what was out there prior to chips. Um, so as you can see, that's, that's what the site is like now. Um, right there where her cursor is, is the, uh, open space. And if, uh, Tracy, if you can get down to the street view with the little guy in the street. Okay, yeah, actually, up in the left-hand corner, it says Seymour dates. Yeah, go to the two thousand twelve. And scroll back out. That's a sense of what was there before it was all taken out.
Well, this, and then again, this is twenty fifteen.
Yeah.
This image here. So.
But you can get a sense of actually the vegetation was there was actually significant before it was taken out.
If if I may, um, it almost looks like, uh, since our client purchased in two thousand twenty-two, that throughout the homeowners, they may have been, uh, removals from two thousand twelve to two thousand fifteen and then two thousand fifteen to now.
So, okay, so look, the bottom line is you have open space that is not looking so much like opens, like what our goal is for open space. You would need a restoration plan. You guys need to know what plants are gonna stabilize the slopes and what plants are gonna thrive, given what has occurred on the site. Um, were you choking on purpose, Mister Lowe? No, okay.
I was coughing. I apologize.
All right, um, and and that's it. Then the second issue that we raised with you was this question about the drainage plan assumes a different pattern, a different development because, uh, situation than what you presently have. So D P W is asking that that be revised. Um, as you know, this is ongoing. A third thing we talked about, uh, yesterday and is also in the staff report is, um, your title search doesn't go far enough back. Um, there's also a concern or a hope from the, from D P W engineering that, uh, there's that this, that that this lot can contribute, can somehow ameliorate the ponding situation that is occurring now, uh, by the cul-de-sac. Um, and
Can we talk about that for a minute?
Yes, is that, I was wondering when, okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Mister Orsi, the the existing catch basin that's actually in the street right at the foot of the property, doesn't look like it's a town of Greenwich structure. Do we know anything about that, that catch basin?
I think we do know. Hold on.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. We just, we just cut out, um, Mister Mac, would you mind repeating a question?
Yes, uh, the catch basin that's at the foot of the property in the cul-de-sac, doesn't look like it's a town of Greenwich structure. Do we know, do you guys know anything about that?
Um, I would do, miss.
So I, yeah, I I think that basin was put in some time ago, um. It's in the town of Greenwich right of way. Um, I'm not sure if it's up to town of Greenwich standards, but, um, all I know is that there's a pipe in that basin that goes from there and eventually discharges into the ponds with to the, uh, to the west. So.
Okay, so, so the
Go on.
The out, the outfall definitely goes, there's, you can see the other end of the pipe down at the, at the pond.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, I just, for my own indication, did you stick a camera in there to see what was going on?
Yeah, so the the camera went sort of towards, uh, the neighboring property. And then it looked like there was a T in the property, so they couldn't get past the T. And I think they had approached the neighbor to see if they could sort of uh, open up that area to see where, which directions the pipes are coming from, et cetera. I believe told not to do that and to get off the property. So all we know is that it leads from the cul-de-sac onto the neighboring lot. And then eventually there's a discharge to the pond at the west.
Okay, cause I think that's one of the things in our notes and I think some of the neighbors had concerns of, uh, flooding down there because that catch basin doesn't work or has a tendency to, uh, get topped.
Right, and so if I may comment a little bit on the drainage, because I believe Madam Chair had a question about the woods in the drainage model as well. So, uh,
It's not my question as much. I'm sharing with you. I'm, I'm sitting here, I'm, um, okay, so Nick, if I could turn you back to, let's hit both of these department, the Public Works Engineering comments. They are asking that you investigate this catch basin at the end of the cul-de-sac. Um, he thinks that the outlet pipe crosses the property. Did you say that, Nick, just now?
Yeah, Mister Yakub actually indicated that actually they put a camera in it. Uh, that's the beginning of the investigation, but then got caught um, with by a neighbor, uh, in and out of allowing them to be on the property. Because it actually, as far as he went, as he just testified, that it went to a T, meaning something else is tied into it.
Yeah.
Um, I think that information, uh, should be supplied by S E minor to, uh, Highway Division. So they can understand, maybe there's additional things tied in there that shouldn't be.
Yeah.
And or it may be clogged farther down the line, which
Right.
If this is a town of Greenwich, uh, catch basin needs to be rarity somehow.
They're also not clear. It is, they're asking if there's an easement and to find out about that. But, um, while we're on this issue of the, of the points that D P W is raising, it's first of all that you were, that they concluded that your drainage plan was assumed on a vegetated lot. Um, they're asking these questions about, uh, the catch basin. They're asking also about the existence of an easement. And now one comment, uh, that I'd like to jump to from there is that they, the cul-de-sac does not comply, uh, with the town's standards. However, we would like you, I believe, I'm speaking for all of us, because the question came up yesterday. I think we were on the same page. We wanted you to evaluate two things. Um, not adding a second driveway. If you can have a combined driveway that is better environmentally. We realize you're working with somewhat difficult topography, but we'd rather, we would prefer one curb cut. Only one driveway opening, uh, into this, if you got the subdivision approved. And then where D P W is asking you to change the cul-de-sac to meet town standards, uh, we would like to have an evaluation of that because we think that a lower amount of impervious surface may be preferable, unless you have reason to believe otherwise. Nick, go ahead, because I think you have stuff to build with that. Or are you, am I?
Yeah, I think actually understanding it to see if it's even possible to relocate the driveway across the front yard of the other residents.
Yep.
Um, and how that works with your grades and maneuvering, um, and the slopes that you need to traverse. Um, in looking at the Engineering Division, uh, comments, they were actually talking about easement. There were, there's a little bit of that pipe that crosses your property, but the rest of it's on an, on another. But I think a continued or a continued dialogue with engineering about that catch basin is warranted.
Yeah.
Uh, they specifically mentioned it. You did do some, uh, research. Um, I think actually presenting that what you, what you found actually would go a long way to start to resolve that particular issue.
Hmm.
Um, and then the driveway, again, it's that now you're gonna be into cross easements and other things because you're, uh, combining, maybe not think of it as an issue of going um, from the new house to the old house. Maybe it's the old house to the new house. Maybe that's a possible solution. I'm not too sure if your radiuses and geometry would work, but that's, that's another way of actually minimizing the curb cuts.
Yeah.
Um, in addition, I think exploring the, uh, In addition, I think exploring the what the town requires for opening up that the cul-de-sac and the geometry of that. As Ms. Savan said, we were looking for more green space.
Right.
If it's just because they wanted to straighten it out because it's untidy. You know, we can leave it as untidy, I think.
Right.
So. If, okay, I believe we addressed many of these concerns with DPW. I, we received revised DPW comments from Jacqueline. Maybe earlier this, was it this today? But I, I have comments dated 12/7/2023 from DPW.
Which is, which is what we're looking at. No, I'm looking at 10/27.
Right, so on 12/7, many of those comments that were on the
We don't have those in our staff report. We don't have those comments. I don't have those comments in my file.
Okay.
I only have 10/27. That's what I've been reading from. So, look. You've got to do the restoration plan. You've got to address DPW. You're going to go to them and you're going to tell them that the commission would rather not have a new curb cut, that the commission would also prefer to reduce impervious and would be interested in not expanding the cul-de-sac shoulder. I think it's the shoulder area they want expanded. And we've given you a lot of work to do. What I would suggest if the commission's done asking questions is that we go to public comment. You'll get the input because we had, did have some public comment on this. You get that input and then just come back to us once you've got a good show. A good plan, as Tony DiAndrea would say, wrong, wrong engineering firm. All right. Does anybody in the commission have questions we have not addressed? All right. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? This is 19 Lakeview Drive. Please raise your virtual hand. 19 Lakeview Drive. Yes, Mr. Dafina. Patrick, if you would be ready to start the timer, given the amount of public comment we're expecting tonight, we're going to limit everybody to three minutes. And we might have to go to two, but let's start out with three. Most people, Ms. Cullen, if people talk too fast when we limit their time, just let us know because Mr. Basili always tells us when people gallop. Mr. Dafina, if you would, go ahead. You need to unmute, sir. Okay. There you go. Perfect. Done. Good job.
My barber's with me. Hello, Commission. Thank you for hearing us. We're the owners of 24 Lakeview Drive, which is adjacent to the subject property. And have a couple of comments. You've covered a lot already.
Well, Mr. Dafina, I have a question for you. I read you're the one who sent the email and you described it. What date did you say the clear cutting was, the removal of the trees? Roughly, when was that?
Oh, soon after they bought the property.
Okay, just asking. So 2022, I thought that's what you said in your email. Go ahead, sir. Sorry, I interrupted.
And it was quite a show. It all sorts of equipment.
Okay, go ahead because you've got limited time.
Okay, I want to make a comment that this all may be moot. But in the, in the title survey, deed search, all those deeds contain a restriction against, for a single single family dwelling only. And this is a two lot subdivision, so I don't know where that's going to go. We, I'm interested, you've covered it also, the driveway being a single driveway for one curb cut. As far as the catch basin, I don't think that's the town's. It's been there a long time. And I don't know what to do with that exactly. The, the application talks about not using that catch basin at all as part of the drainage system. But if there's, if there's going to be a, a long driveway pouring into the cul-de-sac, it's going to that, going to that cul, it's going to that catch basin no matter what. You can't stop it. I think.
It's also directly opposite our driveway, so it's going, we have a sloped driveway. It's going to create icy conditions that are going to make it difficult for us. The owner of 19 already has reprimanded people working on our property to put the leaves up top where they can be picked up by town workers because of a driveway that's not there. And then when we moved it to comply with her, our mail person said they couldn't get to our mailbox. So we've already had some intrusion on our rights there. It's a small cul-de-sac. It's used constantly by people who have services done, landscapers, et cetera. And I can't picture another driveway there. There's just no way for people to get around easily. We're concerned about the fire hydrant that's there and how that might be obscured or impeded by further development.
Is this Mrs. Dafina? Do you have a first name? Yes, Kelly Barbara, Barbara Dafina. Thank you. Thank you.
One other thing.
People commented that the clear cutting disturbed, you know, the wildlife in the area. We, you know, we feel a difference and I feel that the construction of two houses up there, it's just going to be such a completely difficult thing for the rest of us to live through. And as far as that, those two people that came, they represented themselves as town employees. And I, I feel that that was deceptive and
Yeah, I saw that in your letter. That's an odd thing. I saw that in your email. Your time is up, but I believe Mr. Makra has a question for you.
Okay. All right. So, Mrs. Dafina, the drainage as proposed collects all the water that's coming down the driveway into a trench drain that's kept on the site. As I understand, and looking at the plan, that catch basin that's out there has a pipe that goes directly across your property. And it's in the right of way, so it looks like it should be, that belonged to the town of Greenwich.
Maybe.
And as part of, as part of deed restrictions, when you have a private deed restriction, that's something that the commission doesn't get into. It's, it's part of the property owners and their discussions.
You're going to have to get your own. In other words, what Nick is saying is if you wanted to pursue that, what Mr. Makra is telling you, it would have to be it would have to be the neighborhood or the residents or a property owner who pursues it legally. That's not within our scope. Mr. Makra?
Right, and as proposed in front of us, the, it's a two lot subdivision with only one new building being built. That would be on the new lot itself.
Right.
And the fire hydrant is actually on the other property. It's in there, it's in there, it's in the right of way in front of the existing house.
For the applicant's property.
Yes.
Understood.
Okay, I think that's all I got.
Alrighty. Mr. Dafina, Mrs. Dafina, thank you. And does anybody else wish to speak on this application at 19 Lakeview? All right. So SC Minor, you're hearing the same input across the board. If you would. I apologize that we did not see this revised from last Thursday, DPW comments. Patrick, did you have a comment on that?
Well, we got it Friday afternoon, it looks like, and Ms. Pruitt added it to your, your materials on Monday morning. So, you know, Monday morning would have been the earliest opportunity.
Okay, so in any event, they still have items to address and
So we have a basis plan, basis radiation plan, restoration plan?
Open space restoration, full open space restoration. Don't forget how the open space will be delineated, how it will be marked. What species will, are expected to thrive. I think at this point, we would still, Conservation was still asking about soil testing. You may want to explore that with them or with the staff person, the planner who worked on this. What else? We're, the catch basin, the driveways and the full extent of your deed, deed search. That is.
I think actually, with the catch basin, I think it's a, something from, something from DPW Engineering Division, just in Highway Division to see, to get their take on the status of that.
Well, and they're also asking that the easement's been explored. So I think we've given you homework and we would continue this application and hear it when you wish to return. When you're ready to return.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you very much to both of you. Alrighty. Our next application is Greenwich Academy for a final site plan and special permit to obtain a revised enrollment cap of 780 students to replace the current enrollment cap of 730 students at a site located at 200 North Maple Avenue in the RA1 and R20 zones and representing the applicant.
Mr. Hasland, who should be joining us shortly.
There he is. Hello, Mr. Hasland. You just muted yourself. There he goes. Okay, he's good. Hello, Mr. Hasland.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Chip Hasland for the applicant Greenwich Academy. With me tonight is Margaret Haslett, who is the new head of Greenwich Academy. Andrea Sabasana, who is the CFO of Greenwich Academy, Eric Brower, whom you all know, is a land use consultant here in town, as well as John Canning and Andrea Canal from Kimley Horn, our land use, I'm sorry, our traffic consultants.
Is Andrea, okay, Andrea Sabasana.
And Andrea Sabasana is the CFO, correct?
Great.
Greenwich Academy.
All right, and your traffic person?
Yes, John Canning, right, and Andrea Canal, both from Kimley Horn.
I'm not seeing John Canning. What? All right, that's okay. We'll start with you and there he is. Okay. All right.
Thank you. You will recall that we came before you on a pre-app in May of this year. And that was after considerable time spent on trying to examine what the academy might do in order to justify to the commission an increase in the enrollment cap that was placed on it in 2000 by the zoning board of appeals. And we hired Kimley Horn as a consultant to try to come up with some ideas and concepts that might reduce the impact on traffic, which we recognize since the early 90s has been the issue. Whenever Greenwich Academy has tried to do something in this neighborhood, it's always traffic, 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 and we get it. It's a highly congested area. And like almost all the schools in town, private and public, because of the nature of them with their opening at a certain time and closing day at a certain time. Traffic's always an issue. And the question is, how do we deal with it? And John came back with Andrea and said, look, the only way to really deal with the traffic issue is to make sure you don't introduce more traffic than you already have. And, and we have a couple of ideas, but that's the major idea. And how are you going to do that? And one idea is busing. And if you look at the transcripts dating back to the 90s from discussions with the neighbors and the commission on past applications, it always comes up, can you do more with busing? And certainly back in 2000, the impression was the school's part that it was pretty much a non-starter. We did have some busing and still have had busing up until we even started this new program. But at one point, the public transportation, kind of transportation, the routes were extended, so it made it very difficult for students to get to Greenwich Academy in a in quick speed. And therefore, some of the ridership fell off. And we decided therefore to come back with a very aggressive, well-thought-out plan by which we could transport more students to the school from the areas where we know that there's little pockets of students who live in an area that would be well-served by a better transportation plan. So that's what we've been working on. And that's what we reported to you that we were going to implement last May when we saw you. And then we updated you again this past September, when we came before you, still on the pre-app and indicated that we implemented a plan and that we were going to have Kimley Horn come back and do some counts come October, which we've done. Kimley Horn came in the property in October, October 19th, and then again on October 24th to do counts first at the intersection and of the busing ridership. And then again, when they came back on the 24th, on the busing ridership in particular. But I do want to emphasize in particular, and I'll have Andrea Sabasana talk about this a little bit in a second, that the school also has been monitoring the transportation plan and how well it's worked for several weeks, I think it was seven weeks in September and October, actively monitoring that plan. So in addition to Kimley Horn's methodology, which I noticed, by the way, that both Beta and the Town's Traffic Department recognized as proper and seem to have very little issue with the results of that study. We also had the school monitor it itself and doing day-to-day counts of what was happening on the property. So with that brief introduction, I just introduced Margaret Haslett for a moment to make a few comments. And then Andrea, if you could pick up after that and discuss exactly what the plan is that you implemented and what you saw by way of the implementation and its success. So further to Margaret.
Thanks, Chip. Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. Just want to reiterate the reasons why we're seeking this incremental flexibility on our main campus enrollment cap. We've been fortunate to see a strong demand from both local families as well as those families planning to move out of the city into this area. We're also wanting to be consistent with the recent growth of other area private schools. Our growth would be primarily in our middle and upper schools, and we're seeking to have gender parity in our upper school classrooms. Any increase would be phased in over several years. It would not happen all at once, and we would anticipate adding between 10 to 15 students a year over the next three to five years. Our desire is to keep our community together here on the North Maple Street since community is very important to us here at GA. And most importantly, we recognize the challenges of the surrounding area and our understanding of the concerns of our neighbors and are committed to resolving and helping out as we've been doing this year related to the traffic issue. And we want to do it in a sustainable way. So with that, let me turn it over to Andrea. Thank you.
Thanks, Margaret, and thank you to the members of the commission for listening to us today. As mentioned, we launched a significantly expanded shuttle bus effort this fall, going from three buses to 10 buses. This included many new routes in the Greenwich area where 65% of our students reside and a few other key locations as well. We did several things to encourage ridership. Number one, we included the cost in the cost of tuition where previously this had been charged out as an added service. We focused on very convenient routes with shortened timeframes and reasonable pickup times with no more than one to three stops each to really try to make it convenient to families. It is consistent with our overall goal of increasing our focus on sustainability. And it's an opportunity for students to actively make a difference on climate change, even if it's in a small way. We really actively promoted this program via social media, frequent messages to our community. We had students themselves who were bus riders speak at Monday morning meetings to all of our divisions. We promoted, you know, that bus ridership has proven benefits to students, increased independence and building a sense of community, as well as benefits to parents and caregivers, giving them back some of their time, especially as dual working families increase. With the new addition of the seven buses, bus registrations increased from 68 to 186. And ridership in the busiest morning hour increased from approximately 30 students to 110 students, more than triple an increase. I also wanted to note that if we are given enrollment cap relief, we'll continue to operate and promote this expanded bus program. We've seen a lot of interest as part of our admissions process and anticipate it to grow over time as students and families see those benefits. And annually, we would also review any routes for low ridership and try to repurpose or reroute those where we may have a chance to capture more students. Chip also mentioned we were doing daily counts for a period of about seven weeks. And with those counts, we really saw consistency in that 110 student number overall, staff members out there counting every day as students got off the bus in part to supervise them and also to, to see how successful the program was. Now turn it over to John Canning, who's going to go through.
Before we do that, if y'all wouldn't mind, we've got hands up on the commission, which means they're they would like to ask some questions. Mr. Makra, your first. Ms. Jenkins, do not forsake your place. You are currently second.
I will defer to Ms. Jenkins first.
No, and she was fine. She's second. She raised after you. Go ahead, Mr. Makra, followed by Mr. Levy.
Okay, Mr. Hasland. You're talking about bus counts in the morning. Are they similar? Um, are they similar, if not the same, in the afternoon? I.e., if a hundred percent of the school arrives at bus in the morning? Does the hundred percent of students leave by bus in the afternoon? Or is it different in the afternoon?
It's different in the afternoon as, uh, Kimbley Horn's study indicates. And I think that, uh, well, I should really let them comment on that because they are the experts, not me, but, uh, we did not get the same numbers in the afternoon that we got in the morning, um, in part, no doubt, because of the sports, after-school sports activities and, and, uh, uh, you know, other things, arts and, and, and whatnot. So that's, I think, the rationale, uh, that we see for that, uh, but I'll let Mr. Canning speak to that.
Okay, are, are there buses provided for, for after-school activities? Can students to take a bus after school, after the sports, after the arts, so on and so forth?
All of our buses, um, leave at four PM, and then we also have a late bus that leaves at the train station, so our, um, some of our activities are done by four PM, which is why we chose that time, and then um, some of them extend beyond, which we do have a late bus. Um, a few different stops.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hasland, um, back in two thousand, twenty-three years ago, uh, courtesy of our staff, the planning and zoning commission and the ZBA both applied on this, uh, basically to the statement that the traffic issues that are in and around the site can be controlled by a enrollment cap. And there was much discussion as to, they previously didn't have the enrollment cap, but specifically to, um, control the traffic issues, they would institute a, a traffic, uh, enrollment cap of approximately seven twenty-nine, which is where you are now, I guess, about seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty plus two percent.
The two, yeah, the two thousand decision of the CB, ZBA is for, is for.
So it seems that, uh, the precedent in my eye have been, has been set that, back in twenty-three years ago, that there's a cap here for a reason.
Yeah.
Um, and we're, we're asking for, you know, can we change the cap? I think that actually the members of the ZBA and the commission at the time kind of foresaw exactly this day. It's going to creep up and creep up, and that maybe we should keep it at a minimum, so it doesn't get so intensive into the neighborhood.
Um, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, has that a question for me?
Well, I'm just making that statement because I think everything that I just heard, everything I've just heard kind of, kind of is in contradiction to that.
Okay, um, so back in two thousand, um, at that time, the enrollment was roughly, uh, around seven twenty or so, and, uh, uh, I've read the transcripts, uh, read them back in last May, and I read them again last couple days, uh, from that time period, as well as all the other transcripts that I could find. And, uh, it was, um, at that time, if you recall, the zoning board of appeals, uh, under the offices of special exception use would review school type use like this in clubs, et cetera. And that has since been taken away from the board by the commission, and now the commission does it under special permit, which is fantastic, because you don't have that same sort of, uh, duplication of effort. But at that time, the commission, after having several hearings and having heard the neighborhood, um, recommended to the zoning board of appeals that they consider, uh, putting a cap on enrollment for the school. And, uh, at the time that the school appeared before the board, uh, in two thousand, um, they voluntarily agreed to, uh, put a cap on uh, the enrollment of the school, and I think they were at that time asking for a total of seven fifty, um, which would be, uh, seven thirty plus a little wiggle room of twenty. And ultimately, the board, although their, uh, the deliberations was not captured in the recording, um, ended up saying seven, uh, seven thirty plus a two percent wiggle room or factor. And that's what it evolved to be. So it was basically the school agreed, and that was the current enrollment at that time was roughly the exact same number. So give or take a few. So that's how it, it, uh, it came to be. Um, in the interim, uh, you know, we obviously looked at all that back in the spring to say, okay, what can we do to make things better? And we saw throughout the transcripts, this issue raised constantly by the neighborhood, which was busing, busing, busing. And the school just didn't think it was viable at that time, and I don't think the sentiment was there, but that has certainly changed, as we've seen. The mentality, in the first part, by the students themselves, recognizing the fact that this is something that's good for the environment, good for the school, and they've actually found they enjoy taking the bus, or so we hear, which is great. So we're, we're encouraged by all of that. But, um, what's changed here is we are now, uh, we have instituted this aggressive plan to get more students to ride the bus, and it's been successful. So we're pleased in that, but that's what's changed since two thousand.
Right, one, one other question, uh, you, you was just stated, actually, how many students take the bus? Was about a hundred something?
Hundred and ten.
Hundred and ten out of seven, seven hundred and thirty. And that number changes in the afternoon. So it may not be a hundred and ten, it may be fifty. I don't, we don't know, but I think that's something to consider here to understand that the busing may be a good idea, but unless it's a lot more, not more students, and a lot more students in the afternoon, I'm having issues with that, with that, that argument.
Well, I think as the study bears out, um, there's a lot less traffic in the area during the afternoon peak period than there is in the morning peak period. And I think that's different than what you see from Greenwich High School when it goes, uh, out onto the post road, uh, and which is pretty much a steady traffic flow, uh, even in the mid-afternoon, uh, than you see over this part of town. But again, I can't speak as the traffic expert, and I can't speak for the study. I think the study speaks for itself in that regard, and I'll have John, you know, discuss that in greater detail, but that's, that was their findings, that there's less demand.
Um, if, uh, Ms. Jenkins is the next one.
Um, yeah, I, I think I'm, I'm taking, um, uh, page from Nick, but going in a different direction here. Even in two thousand, when the cap was first discussed, one of the conditions was an assured, assured increase in bus transportation. Um, and as Nick says, you've got a hundred and eighty-six people signed up, and that's wonderful, and the student enthusiasm is, is great to hear. But you only have sixty percent of the people who are enrolled actually using the bus, even in the morning, when you you appear to have a better result in the morning than in the afternoon. I just, signing people up is great, but if the students aren't using it, we're looking, we're looking at the possibility, but not the assurance um, of bus use. And I mean, I, the, if I'm correct, and I'm, I'm willing to have Mr. Canning obviously correct me, only thirty-six people rode the bus in the afternoon on the October, uh, measurement date. I mean, at that point, thirty-six out of seven hundred and fifty-three is, it's negligible. So I'm concerned about, but about taking the numbers that have signed up and turned it into an actual ridership that you can depend on reducing the traffic at both times of the day.
Uh, Mr. Levy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to, uh, reiterate some of these things, um, that we've been talking about. Uh, these concerns, um, have been going on since I've been aware of them, since I've been on the commission. So unfortunately, it's turning into a long time.
No, 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 it's not a long time.
Yes. But, uh, uh, I, I, I would love to understand how to ameliorate this problem. Uh, it seems to me that the cart might be before the horse here. Instead of alleviating the numbers issue about enrollment, uh, I think that, uh, maybe the applicant should be attentive to reducing the numbers and showing us that in fact they can control their, um, um, traffic situation better before coming to us and asking us to alleviate it. It seems, it seems to me that, um, I would like to, I would like to feel like the this sustainability word that they keep on using um, really means something to them, and that they connect with their neighbors in a way that shows me that they're really not only reading maybe in, uh, some of the comments and hearing it, but actually listening to it and empathizing with it, because these problems are, are issues of quality of life for these neighbors. And I'm very concerned on how it has not improved over time and has gotten worse. So, um, I am uh, simply, uh, uh, kind of, um, I, I just don't feel that the application is looking at the problem the way I would like them to think about it. I'd like them to come back to us with a uh, a better understanding of what they really can do to reduce um, uh, the, the traffic by actually showing us that they're able to do it before they come up with a request.
Okay, uh, Mr. Yaski.
Yeah, I have a question, but I would rather hear from the traffic, uh, Kimberley Horn people. Go over that, because I think what it boils down to is can they improve the busing, as we talked about yesterday? So, um, the last time Greenwich Academy did this, they looked at the the, the new preschool and the upper school and the lower school, and they came up with some ideas. Um, so I'd rather hear from him before we get into, you know, we keep theorizing things. I, I'd like to have the, uh, traffic engineer talk about the studies.
Okay, um, uh, I'm, I'm all right with that. I think, um, Mr. Canning, one of the many things, um, I believe you have seen both the comments from DPW as well as our traffic consultant, Beta. And I would, I would like you to address those, um, how the counts, what was assumed for the other locations, um. One of the issues, of course, that is coming up repeatedly from the commission is that for, uh, project that is supposed to be ongoing, it seemed odd to do the council only on two days. And that there was, again, DPW raises the same question that everyone else is raising, which is how do we know that it goes on into the out years? Uh, that was their wording, um, in that regard, uh, what they said was, um, the, the continuation in the future was of concern. And so if you would begin with all of those, you've heard our concerns. They recap into this may be a great idea. I would recap, this is how I would summarize what everybody's saying, but it is not a foregone conclusion that, from what we've read, that you have accomplished the goal that you set out to accomplish, and that would justify adding traffic. The traffic congestion we've all seen has increased significantly in the last twenty-four years. Go ahead, Mr. Canning.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Um, a, as Chip has said, a, and as you have echoed, a, as the neighbors have said, we're keenly aware that traffic is the issue. And I really would love to be up here saying that we found a silver bullet.
Hmm.
But, you know, I've been very honest and transparent in our report on, uh, what we've accomplished, what we're trying to do, how the school is working, uh, to match its request to the success of the program. Um, I would say that traffic operating conditions have not gotten worse since we started this process. We started this process with the school this time around, back about this time last year. And they retained us for our expert advice on traffic. We did studies in the spring. We identified issues that were occurring on the campus that were affecting traffic off the campus, specifically at the upper school, where their queuing was spilling back out onto North Maple Avenue to such an extent that motorists who are trying to travel north and south and on North Maple Avenue would get caught behind people who couldn't turn into the school because the driveway was full, and they would turn into the wrong lane and drive down the wrong side of the road to get around the queue. So when we saw that, we brought it to the attention of the school. They moved two of their grades over to the lower school, and that problem is fixed. Uh, we also recognize that the school cannot increase its enrollment if it's going to increase its traffic. And we can't magically make cars disappear. The best we can do is get students on a bus. And we set about a program. They have tripled the number of buses. They've tripled the number of students riding the bus. We've done counts at the driveways in the morning, which is by far the busiest period, because all of the students from all of the schools in the area arrive at almost the same time. Uh, we've reduced traffic volumes at the school driveway by sixty vehicles. It's, it's, I'd be the first one to admit, I'd love to see it be a hundred and twenty vehicles, but it's still a reduction. And the school had originally contemplated asking this board for permission to increase its enrollment by a hundred students, but they're good stewards, and they said, well, you know, it's gotta be at least better than one for one, so they're asking for a fifty student enrollment. So with that, the school will not be increasing traffic. We'd still be technically less traffic. It'll be, uh, no worse than it is if this application were to die now and the school is just to continue on with its, its current enrollment. Uh, I will offer a couple of thoughts on the.
If I could, if I could, yes, because that's all well and good, but I'm just gonna cite Mr. The DPW question, which is how are you going to, uh, guarantee this continues? How is the program guaranteed to continue in future years? And with, it, it, it belies, it really begs the question when you've done traffic counts on only two days. Go ahead, Mr. Canning, and then please note that you have two commissioners who want to ask you questions.
Sure, if it would be helpful, I, I, I'll continue, or if it would be helpful for the commissioners to ask the questions now.
I think it would be, because th- 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 then you'll, you know, it'll move on. Go ahead, Mr. Yaski, then Levy, then Lo.
Yeah, um, how many, uh, students would have to ride the bus to actually keep the traffic, uh, in the mornings at the same level or less? Have you done a calculation like that? I know you've added all the buses, but they're not riding them, so.
At the same level or less than what, Mr. Yaski?
The current traffic, the current traffic.
That's ex- that's exactly what we've done. We, we have said that by implementing this busing program and adding fifty students, we'll have ten less cars going into or out of the school driveway in the future than we had back in January before the busing and with the current enrollment.
I thought there was an additional thirty-five cars, uh, added at that point.
Well, so, so what happens is we take, we had, we started with nine fifty-three. We take sixty off, which goes to, I'm guessing, eight ninety-three. And we add the fifty students back, and that increases it by fifty, so that goes to nine forty-three, so we're ten less than where we started. Does that make sense?
Kind of. But I guess you've heard us say that we're looking for more busing with more students taking those buses to provide some relief for the traffic. Uh, because as everyone says, um, we're, we're not sure what's gonna happen in the future. Traffic has been increasing in town for the last twenty years, for sure. It, it's probably gonna continue to increase. So, you know, that's not a steady state, you know, that, that's gonna continue to go up. So prob- problem comes right back again at this point. And I think what we were talking about was making busing e- expanded significantly, and maybe make it mandatory for certain students in certain areas uh, that would help on the overall flow of traffic in that entire area. I don't know whether you have a thought about that, but, um, wh- wh- you know, I think you know what we're getting at.
I, I, I do, and I think the school has demonstrated its commitment to, to do this. Um, it's difficult, if not impossible, to, to mandate everybody ride the bus. I know it's something that the school could look into to maybe.
Why, why would it be difficult to not, to impossible?
Because, you, you know, you, you've got certain families that are just not gonna come to the school. They're like, I'm not gonna do that. I'll go send my kid somewhere else. There's plenty of good schools in Greenwich.
But the demand is there.
Uh, the demand may be there, um, as it stands today, but it's not necessarily there if you're mandated to take the bus.
And to be honest, I mean, to that, Mr. Canning, we are saying, we've been giving the same message to every single school we see, every time we see any school, private and public. We want busing, we want carpooling, we want vans, we wanna ease the traffic situation. We know you've done our studies, you know, you have a tremendous problem on our north side thoroughfare, on north-south thoroughfares. Go ahead, Mr. Yaski, I think you weren't done.
Madam Chair, if I may just respond before Mr. Yaski, that, because I, you now have a school that's actually trying to do all of those things. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, this is not the only school that. You, this is not the only school that's trying to do all of those things. We've had the exact same dialogue with Country Day, for example, repeatedly. When they, I, we have the exact same conversation with them and they assure us that they are working on this. Uh, Mr. Yesky, go ahead.
No, I think I got my point across. I mean, we can keep. Hear from, I I don't think it's appropriate. For him to talk about uh, more busing. I think we ought to hear from uh, the the applicant directly. About tha- that possibility. How about that?
All right, but let's let the commission ask their questions first. Mr. Levy.
Uh, you, thank you, Madam Chair. I um. I am frustrated by. The thinking behind. The application. Um, it seems to me that we need a reduction in. The traffic. We're not trying to hold it to what it is. It was unacceptable five years ago. And it's still unacceptable. It was one unacceptable year ago and it's still unacceptable today. Uh, this is, this is a, a. An issue that. Is foremost on our minds that we really have to come to terms with. We can't just. Push this down the road and think that, well, maybe they'll be able to work it out. It's before us now, and I think that. Uh, w- we have to be responsible to. Be adamant about this problem, saying that this is a bridge too far. I think that uh. It's important to respect. Uh, the the limitations of the neighborhood. And all I see is a willingness to press on. And say, well, a little bit more won't help, or it won't hurt so much. I just think it's the wrong message.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Lo.
Yeah, um, he he took some of my, still a little bit of.
Well, you can thunder this this. You can thunder too.
Um, uh, you know, uh, I, what I was gonna say, this is already a problem. Um, and given the busing initiative, shouldn't we be trying uh, for appreciably? Greater reduction in in congestion and um, and I'm not sure maintaining the status quo is a sufficient goal. And uh, and your, what you're suggesting. Or what this application is suggesting is just trying to barely stay even with things. And it's staying even with with something that's a big problem. Um, and now we've been uh, provided with limited data, testing on two days over a single month. Uh, it would be so much better. Uh, I know, uh. The applicant probably doesn't feel it has the luxury of time. But i- i- time is what's required to establish a consistent track record of sustained reduction in traffic.
And um, okay, Ms. Ms. Jenkins.
Yeah, Mr. Lo has not stolen my thunder, but I think that. The the issue that I have is because this has not been in place that long. We don't even know if this is typical. We don't know if it's gonna get better or worse. And if the enrollment cap is increased and we're already over the the existing enrollment cap plus two percent. You know, at that point, we're not going to take it back because the the basically the die has been cast. So to do this on the basis of a program that was, has been put in relatively recently and the data is limited. And the time period to see if there are changes, maybe the changes would be great. Maybe that, maybe by April, the numbers will be terrific. But I don't know that and and. I'm also somewhat concerned that there seems to be an assumption that if we add fifty students. The ridership among that fifty students would be reflected the same as your your current bus ridership. So um, not not to go any further with that, but there's just such an, there's such an ephemeral sense about some of these numbers. They they, I'm sure they're valid. I don't question the the good faith of the of the school or the efficiency of Mr. Canning. But it's just numbers are numbers and and once the enrollment is increased, we're we're already there.
Mr. Wells.
Yeah, I I sent a question for Mr. Canning or or the school. If you look at. Mr. Canning's number on page three of his report, the problem seems to be in the lower school. In a lower school from January twenty-three to October, you've got a fifty-eight. Car trip increase in the lower school in the morning. And a forty car trip increase in the afternoon. And uh, that certainly dents the improvement you get in the morning in the upper school and in the. Upper school, you've got fourteen more car trips in the afternoon, but your your real problem is. The car trips in your lower school are increasing and maybe the assumption is. Less, less parents are willing to put their kids in cars in in buses. Uh, at younger ages, I get that. Uh, so that that's one point. Do you know why, why are the car trips increasing for your lower school? During this time study period?
Oh, sorry, that was the redistribution of the uh, two grades to the lower school. Driveway from the upper school driveway to prevent queuing backing up uh, onto the upper school. So that was every distribution to try to make sure that no cars back out onto the street.
Okay, so um, what I'm hearing. Is that you haven't been doing this long enough and you don't have enough results. That's what I'm hearing. I think the commission is. Open to solutions. We are on record for being very supportive of education. We know that it is one of the top four reasons that people move to Greenwich is 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 education, both private and public. Are huge draws, we know that. So we wanna be supportive of your endeavors, but it, what I'm hearing everybody say is that there's not enough. Uh, there's A, not enough of a result yet, that there's not enough indication of an assured continuity. Uh, and as you increase the enrollment, where will that go? Uh, so I don't know how you move forward with that, but uh, what we. Well, I was a little concerned that you've already exceeded the two percent on your enrollment cap. Because now those kids are in your school. I don't know how you solve that. But if you continue this program and you continue to incentivize it. Uh, if you could get better results and come back to us. I would suggest that you do that because we do wanna be there for the all schools. But we're just not seeing it yet. That's what I'm hearing everybody who's spoken comment. And there seems to be a fair amount of passion about it.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, to just.
Yes, Mr. Canning.
Uh, uh, out of curiosity, or I guess that perhaps that's the wrong word, but. How long is long enough? Because, you know, the the school does not want to see this effort die on the vine. Where, I'm sure the school is prepared to uh, to try and answer the board's questions, but. Um, I guess, uh, asking on their behalf, it, you know. How long would it take for the board to be convinced that this is working? Is it months? Is it years?
Well, that's an interesting way that you've praised it, that the school doesn't wanna see it die on the vine. We would like to see this institutionalized. As something that is the base practice. I believe that's what Mr. Levy was trying to say. Want that this has becomes what you do and it wouldn't die on the vine because everybody just assumes that this is what they're gonna do. What makes is making us very uneasy is that next year, people will go, oh. The bus is not fun and we're gonna go back to having mom drive me. And so what we wanna see is that it's really built into your system. I have to stop again because Mr. Yesky and Mr. Levy have their hands up. Um, go ahead, Mr. Yesky.
Yeah, I had brought this up before, and maybe this is a question of uh, the administration. Um, I I don't know where the buses have go, the route, but the gut says that. The further away from the school, the more likely someone would wanna take a bus if you had a concentration of students in an area. I mean, the train station is an obvious one. Uh, Bellhaven's obviously, Westchester County meeting point ge- gets there. I heard the last time that they have students uh, further afield than that. So I don't know if they've concentrated their efforts on the ones most likely to take a bus. That would be one. And then the second one is, I still would like to understand. If on the, in the future, if they could work into their contract, some kind of mandatory to pace. Based on where that student is located or maybe uh, extra students. I mean, there is a big demand. For private schools. Uh, this might be a negotiated thing, but uh, um, it it helps the town a lot. And number three, I'm really concerned that our traffic is gonna continue to increase. Every time we did the analysis, it it's getting worse, so steady state just doesn't work. And I think that's what's underlying my concern. So, three, um, one o- one comment and two questions. You know, is a bus network, uh, are you seeing areas that people are more likely to take the bus and can you build on that? And what about making new students, there's some degree of mandatory or an incentive of some sort or another? You know, I I I'm just throwing that out, cuz I, if you, if they just go away. And and do another survey, maybe they get the same result, maybe they don't, but I'm looking for better solutions.
In terms of the buses themselves, oh, sorry, um. We definitely did a survey to our entire community and looked at locations where people were willing to take the bus. Um, there is some truth to the fact that um, farther away, yes, they are more willing. Um. Within the town of Greenwich, we've seen a lot of success uh, from like old Greenwich Riverside where it's a little bit farther out. Um, we've seen success in Bellhaven as well. Um, so I think there's a couple factors at play. One is the length. Um, and also if their friends are riding the bus, if it's if it's been a really good community builder. Which it has in certain areas, um, then those routes are successful as well.
Mentioned Bronx, you even had people coming out of the Bronx, or maybe I misunderstood that in the past.
Yes, we have a a stop in the Bronx, um, and then that stops at New Rochelle and then Rye.
You know how many people are driving in from Westchester in the Bronx instead of taking the the bus?
I don't have those exact numbers, but I think the majority are probably riding the bus.
Okay, in the same way up into, I don't know how far up you go, Bridgeport in the New York State, you know, I'm looking. I mean, the further out, you would hope they'd be taking the bus. What about the mandatory question? We talked about this at one point. I know it's not. Uh, a wonderful sales tool for the school, but uh, it it, you know, it it. It could help us get to where we're going.
I mean, that's something we could potentially take a look at and explore. We were trying to avoid that by offering, you know, a lot of options survey in our community and. Um, again, trying to offset any traffic impact, but it's um. You know, a potential possibility. I think it just gets difficult in implementation with who do you require that of? How does that?
All work. I I'll just add, we are committed to sustainability. It's part of our most recent in the strategic plan I inherited as the new head. Um, as someone who's worked in schools for over thirty years, it's culture change takes time. And frankly, I've I've been impressed by just the significant change in just one year. Of a school that only had three buses to the ridership with ten, so I'm optimistic. Um, as I, as Andrea shared earlier, the families who are seeking us out um, now are very eager around transportation. And so I'm very optimistic about um, the future and keeping it and sustaining it and growing it.
Mr. Levy, did you have a question?
Am I up?
Yes.
Yes, uh, I I think that uh. Uh, responding to Mr. Canning, I. I'm I I'm a little confused by his question about, you know, wha- what should he do or what should they, what should the applicant do? I I think it's pretty straightforward and uh, they have. Uh, a very good support team to figure out. How to reduce the traffic. And truly show that the sustainability is is a, is a concept that they're able to achieve. And and part of that is reducing the traffic. I don't say that it's easy, but right now. I am. Concerned uh, about the traffic. I think it's to 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 my understanding. It is really unacceptable the way it is. Um, and therefore, if i- if they're requesting something. Um, in an application. And there's, uh, and their idea is to reduce the tra- you know, to 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 in in increase their enrollment. Um, that doesn't sound like a a scenario that is is sustainable. Um, I think they have to show real gains in reducing the traffic. Thank you.
Okay.
I I will offer one nuance. Um, that is reflective of the comments of Mr. Yesky. Um, many of the students that used to be driven were from further away. And when you travel from further away, Bridgeport, the Bronx and Riverside. You end up coming through the intersection of North Maple Avenue with North Street and Patterson Avenue. Which is the most difficult intersection to negotiate in the morning. So our traffic study, the queuing analysis, which is in the study indicates. That the queues on southbound North Maple Avenue at that location. Have been reduced from five hundred feet to four hundred feet. It's been a twenty percent reduction in queuing. As a result of the the proposed changes or the changes that we've made, so. Not only are we taking cars off the street, we're actually taking it more of them proportionally. Off the street where they need to be taken off the street. It's just a nuance, but I just wanted to point it out. And and we appreciate all of the commissioners uh, comments and input because, you know. We're members of the community too.
Okay, um, with that, um. I I, my sense is that you need to continue this and give it some thought and get it deeper ingrained. You are. You are swimming upstream on one topic, which is you are not, the schools are not the only source of increased traffic and we. Uh, we can tell you uh, that we've seen. A a huge increase of traffic that comes into town. And our sense is that there are still people. Who are not taking public transit post pandemic and that they are driving rather than expose themselves. Uh, we also know we, we do have a good employment base in town, but it hasn't changed as significantly as the traffic. Has, uh, Mr. Canning, we have three different neighborhood associations who have approached us with programs to reduce. Their traffic problems. So everybody's talking about this. Uh, okay, so with that, um, if you are okay with it. Um, I have a feeling you're gonna hear much of the same input. I'd like to turn to the public for comment and then we can do a wrap up with how we would move forward. Yes, go ahead. Yeah.
I I just, I'm in in response to Mr. Canning's question uh, about, you know, essentially. You know, how long, how much, you know, what do you, what do you want me to do? I I think, I know, I wonder if, do we as a commission need to provide specific guidance? Is it, is it up to the applicant to completely, I mean, to try to?
Because we are not a traffic authority. We are a zoning authority. So our decision is whether or not to modify the conditions of the special permit, originally special exception, which Greenwich Academy has. For.
Got it, okay.
A an as of right use in the zone which requires a special permit. Therefore, not an as of right use, an allowed use which requires a special permit. We don't do traffic. That's not our regulatory power. So they have to come up with what's gonna work. It it's different from a site plan. They have to come up with what's gonna work and what they can live with. Um, I can add, for example, that they don't wanna be prescriptive on the buses. But we also know that a lot of the Greenwich Academy parents buy houses in the neighborhood. And that it's a draw that you can move to Greenwich and put your kids at GA or at Country Day or at Brunswick. If the traffic is so bad in Greenwich that nobody wants to live here. That's a negative for the school and a negative for the town and a negative for the folks from the BET who are. Listening to this meeting and are thinking they don't want our property tax revenue to go down. So you do wanna manage the traffic. And I'm really glad they're contributing.
We're asking for uh is a greater demonstration of and record of success with this program. Specifically, numbers and actual
Right.
data over a representative period of time.
And not only that, if they can, if they can do this successfully, we'd be happy to start talking to all the other schools about doing more of what Greenwich Academy is initiating. As you guys know, we've had this conversation with Country Day many times ourselves. When Country Day opened the high school, you all know the, how concerned we were. How often did we talk about, how many trips are you making in individual cars? We went on and on about that. So there you go. Okay, public comment, folks, I'm afraid you're going to hear some of the same points that the commission has made, but it's all good. If, Patrick, if you're ready, we'll do three minutes. Our first speaker is Karen Feseliotis, followed by Robert Nicole, followed by Patrick Klosterman. And again, Ms. Cullen, if you would tell me anytime you have trouble with anybody. Okay. So time. Uh, Ms. Feseliotis, if you would unmute and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, uh, good evening. My name is Karen Feseliotis. I've lived in the area of Greenwich Academy for over fifty-five years. Um, I can recall when the field on Ridgeview was the Brunswick Field, so that's how long I've been here. To headmistress Haslett, welcome. I look forward to speaking with you on Neighborhood Matters. Um, I keep thinking that this application is really the um definition of insanity, or maybe it's Groundhog Day. I keep expecting a different result, but the results don't change. It just gets worse. As many of you know, I'm not an abiding neighbor, but I am on the route that many Greenwich Academy students and their parents drive to school from Lake to Carlton to Skylark to Patterson and then North Maple. I've learned with increased traffic through the years that I can't walk my dogs between seven and eight thirty AM and again, from two thirty to four PM due to the caravan of cars, many of them speeding through without regard to pedestrians. My neighborhood has repeatedly asked for traffic enforcement from our police, but it's largely non-existent. I look forward to the Christmas break when traffic calms down, when school's not in session. Increasing the enrollment cap at Greenwich Academy at this time is, to put it bluntly, a bad idea and should not be approved by the committee. Um, you've seen the study. It found that one hundred eighty-six students signed up to participate. Only one hundred nine rode the bus in the mornings, meaning that seventy-three students who signed up did not. And um, a mere thirty-six rode at, at, in the evening. The study concluded that enhanced bus operations did not result in reduction of vehicular traffic at night. And I can attest to that. I live two miles from my mom, who's on the top of Ridgeview. And uh, one night it took me twenty minutes. I mean, not even, I, I don't even live, I mean, I'm sorry, I live one mile. And it took me twenty minutes to travel the one mile from my house on Skylark to her house. I timed it. I should have recorded the trip to show you what it was like. And that one night has been repeated even on weekends. So there is increased traffic at night and we've seen it. Um, I just think that, um, quite frankly, um, at this point in time, um, you need to, to basically say stop. You know, again, when I was in school, I used to ride my bike a lot and I rode my bike from Ridgeview down to what was then the new high school on Fairfield Avenue. Coming home was a pain. It was all uphill. But we did it. It's different today. Everybody's driving themselves. Their parents drive them. And without police enforcement on speed limits and other things, um, it just is not going to work. I thank you for your time. I urge you to respect the P O C D. Vote no on this proposal at this time or continue the application to preserve our neighborhoods.
Thank you very much, Ms. Feseliotis. Uh, our next speaker is Nicole Roberts. Commissioners, thank That, I'm sorry, ma'am, that'll be, he'll, that, then the following is Patrick Klosterman. Go ahead. Sorry.
Commissioners, thank you for your time. I'm Nicole Roberts, a proud member of both the Greenwich and Greenwich Academy communities. Recently, my family and I moved to Ten North Street, which is actually on the corner of North and Maple intersection. Before that, we lived near the Lake Traffic Circle at, at one fifty-three Lake, providing me with firsthand experience as both a neighbor and as a driver dealing with the traffic dynamics around Greenwich Academy.
I'm sorry, dealing with the traffic?
Dynamics around Greenwich Academy.
Thank you.
Our move, our move was fueled by a desire to be closer to GA and the wonderful surrounding community. Today, I'm here to voice my support of Greenwich Academy's request for an en- enrollment cap increase. As a community member, I'm grateful for the outstanding education and sense of community that Greenwich Academy has provided for my three daughters. And it would be wonderful for more young women to have that opportunity through increased enrollment. The school benefits both the students and families directly, as well as the broader Greenwich community, providing a lovely atmosphere to walk through and great playgrounds for neighbors to enjoy, as well as police officers to aid with, with traffic flow. Our family applauds the new busing program, reducing traffic and offering a safer and eco-friendly option for our children with more than a hundred riders in the morning. They've done a great job making the bus option convenient and exciting. My daughters have numerous friends in each of their classes that ride the bus and they say it's great. And my daughter's actually asked to go to these friends' houses so they can partake in these fun bus rides. Thanks to the busing initiatives, my daughters also noted a shorter morning carpool from our old Lake Avenue house this year relative to, to years past. To collect a bit of my own data, I actually stood outside for the past two mornings on my corner of, of North and Maple for the seven to eight AM rush hour. I noted no traffic from seven to seven fifteen, a negligible car to backup at the stop sign from seven fifteen to seven thirty, a heavier period from seven thirty to seven forty-five, and then back to very little traffic by seven fifty AM. I also heard exactly one car honk and saw two GA mini buses, each filled with ten to fifteen girls. Overall, nothing particularly extraordinary or bothersome. And the afternoon, as Mr. Haglin noted, does not have the same rush hour departures as they're spread out between extracurriculars and other after-school activities. So no, nothing extraordinary there either. So there is a known brief fifteen-minute period with more traffic that one might expect living near any school, but it does not have an impact on, on our lives. We also don't hear significant traffic noise during any period of the day and don't have trouble coming or going from our driveway. We are truly thrilled with our move to this wonderful neighborhood and traffic has imposed significant challenges. And given the thoughtful and strategic approach to the enrollment increase, including busing, we're not worried about, about future issues, being a, a Greenwich Academy neighbor. In conclusion, grateful to be part of both of these communicate, communities and appreciate your dedication to considering these measures to strengthen both of our, both of these communities.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Klosterman is next, followed by Leslie Tarkington.
Thank you. I live with my family, including a son and daughter, at one eighty-three North Maple Avenue. We moved to Greenwich because we value low taxes and access to schools. Greenwich has experienced a dramatic rise in home values driven by buyers like us with children who have increased the demand on the local schools. Meanwhile, Greenwich has allowed central, middle and OG schools to deteriorate. Inaction is not okay. The increase in morning congestion is driven by increased local commutation. My driveway on North Maple is among those most affected by this traffic. We exit every morning during peak flows. The only nuisance time is from seven thirty to seven fifty, as Nicole noted before me. I advocate for decreased traffic overall. Our five-year-old son takes a bus, saving us ninety minutes of time on the road daily. Morning traffic has improved on North Maple since GA increased its busing program this year. Last year, northbound traffic on North Maple would sometimes stand still at my driveway. I have not experienced this problem this year. Afternoons are not the problem. This is not the issue because students are dispersed in various activities and there is no commutation traffic at three thirty PM. Today, I just observed the afternoon pickup and there was little traffic on North Maple at this time. Ridership on the trains has increased significantly over the last eighteen months. These people drive to the train station like my wife and I do to commute to our jobs in New York City. The problem is that school start times and commutation occur at the same time in the morning. I think the real framing of this discussion is around whether this neighborhood's property values are adversely impacted versus providing greater access to education for our girls. And I do not want myself or any of our neighbors to be adversely impacted by these decisions. I advocate for strong property values and high-quality education and think this goes together. That's why I'm here. We, as a community, need to prioritize education, our children and their futures. Good schooling supports property values by enticing buyers to come into the community. As a society, if we really want to get serious about women's equality in the workforce, it starts with these decisions that provide for our girls the opportunity to learn and excel. We support GA's application to increase its enrollment cap by fifty students. GA has been a great neighbor to us since we moved in. The campus is beautiful, well-maintained. The people at GA have been good partners to us, including those on this call, listening to and acting on our concerns. Additionally, Greenwich families that send their children to GA fund the public school system through their property taxes while they do not use it. This benefits all of our children by opening up spots and allowing for more one-on-one instruction. With our support, we ask, with our support, we ask that GA do the following. Disproportionately allocate the new spots to Greenwich residents. Otherwise, this does not help our local children. But I do understand that the seven expanded bus routes have prioritized access to the local Greenwich community, which is good. Two, continue to drive enrollment in the busing program to further decrease traffic. This is very important to us and to our neighbors. And three, lastly, commit to work directly with us on any future needs the school has and also serve as a resource to help us resolve neighborhood issues like speeding problems that start at Patterson and continue northbound on North Maple. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Leslie Tarkington, followed by Cheryl Saban.
Uh, good. Good afternoon, uh, Madam Chair, Commission members and staff. I live at seventy-six Hillside Drive. My submitted comments provide additional detail. My comments as a private citizen address three issues. Notice North Street Bridge at Cotswood and the Sewer Division. The impact of the request for enrollment cap increase in traffic patterns impact our neighborhood quality of life, safety, drainage, flooding and sewer. The GA cap increase application should be denied. Notice. Continuous neighbors were noticed. Many are insulated from GA enrollment. Those who live on Andrews, Echo, Francine, Hillside, Ridgebrook, Ridgeview.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Can you read a little slower, Ms. Tarkington? Just read a little slower.
Okay, the West Brother Brook watershed are impacted by GA traffic. Substantial traffic accesses GA from the north. North Street Bridge at Cotswood. When evaluating the GA enrollment cap and traffic, the imminent, the imminent North Street Bridge replacement must be addressed. The traffic consultant and DPW did not. Traffic alternative routes will be catastrophic even without increasing GA enrollment. There is no positive impact because of any current GA busing plan. The North Street Bridge has been shored up with an emergency piling replacement as the bridge piling was moved seven feet by the Water Force of the twenty-twenty-one Ida storm. A maximum four-ton vehicle weight restriction is in place. A type C school bus and smaller buses as well weigh multiples of four tons, moving heavy vehicles to alternative ro- routes, including our neighborhood. Based on neighborhood concern about the impact on flooding and traffic flows, the DPW Deputy Commissioner supports four separate imminent actions, including: One, a public hearing with notice to public and non-public schools, police, fire, GEMS and the Connecticut Department of Transportation. Two, review and public meeting approval by inland wetlands. Three, a timeline cost estimate to update the twenty-twenty-three CDM Smith study. Four, scope and cost to upgrade infrastructure for existing one-hundred-year FEMA flood zones. DPW engineering plans to close, to close for four, for two years, North Street to one-lane traffic only using a traffic light system. Our neighborhood will be serally severely impacted by the additional traffic flow. After Ida, the replacement of the over one-hundred-year North Street Bridge became a priority over nearby bridge replacements. The North Street Mid-Country area will be at standstill at traffic congested periods. And the sewer division. Comments were provided on the Horse Neck Sewer existing capacity concerns. Did GA lower school buildings on the north end enter the Horse Neck or the sewer at Hillside Drive near Francine? Will that be reviewed too? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tarkington.
Madam Chair, before, before Ms. Tarkington steps down, Ms. Tarkington, where is the bridge that's being replaced?
So, um, Nick, it's being replaced at the, uh, North Street at Cotswood. So it's a, a bridge that's over a hundred years old. Um,
Okay, that's, thank, thank you. I, I know the bridge. I see.
It's located um about midway between, say, one North Street and the, um, you know, the lights at Fairfield Patterson. Um, it's just south of
I, I see it. I see it. I hear it in front of me on the computer. Thank you.
It's, it's kind of a low spot and it's where the West Brother Brook crosses North Street.
Okay, thank you. Um, our next speaker is Cheryl Saban. If you would unmute, ma'am. Uh, Ms. Saban, if you would unmute.
I'm sorry, I, I had trouble unmuting. Sorry, I'm not, not used to doing this. Um, so I have lived in Greenwich at Joffrein Lane um, across from the Greenwich Academy on a cul-de-sac for more than thirty years and was involved twenty years ago with the, uh, when the cap was placed on enrollment. And um, I, I, then I was vehement about how the traffic affected our daily lives and how terrible it was. And as you have all noted, it has just gotten worse. And unlike some of the more recent speakers we've heard, I have not noticed any improvement whatsoever. Um, but uh, I, I agree with all of the questions and concerns that uh, the commissioners uh raised. And I, I just want to reinforce the insufficient data and my huge concern that um, we will not continue, even if there has been an improvement in the last ten weeks, which I, I, I don't even know it, it is, is true, that we will not continue to see that. And it's just too many, too much of an increase in an unacceptable situation. Um, I, I also want to say that I love the idea of the mandatory uh busing, uh, which I had never thought about, but I, I would encourage, after listening to this, GA to work with other schools to try to have all of you require mandatory busing of some sort and the uh P and Z to um require applicants from these schools. And you have applications all the time from all the schools. If they want an application passed for, about anything, they have to make busing mandatory because it certainly would um he- help all of us and there needs to be some incentive. And um, I, I also want to say that um, twenty years ago, we heard that, actually not twenty years ago, with the latest expansion, that it wouldn't require or involve any change in enrollment. And now we have it. Um, and there's no, I, 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 I will stop now. The only other thing I want to say is I know there are neighbors who are against it, who aren't willing to speak up. Um, perhaps because, like me, they care about Greenwich Academy and love the school, but somebody's got to speak up or it's just going to be even more intolerable.
I, I don't think this is an issue of not supporting the school. It's of just trying to look at the school in the context of the community. Thank you, Ms. Saban.
Sure. Thank you.
To, you know, Ms. Tarkington reminded me of a point uh that did come up in the staff report. It, it, as you, as you may be aware, all of you from the academy, the uh, the Horse Neck Sewer has a limitation in capacity, the, the lines do. And what the sewer department has offered and, or assures us is that a use that is within our zoning will be assured. However, the point is of it, but they're not there to increase beyond what we have zoned for. So it raises the question of, by continuing to increase enrollment, are we putting undue pressure on the sewer system? And that's on the sewer lines. And that was the point that um is in the staff report as well. So I ask you, I guess, Ms. Haslett, uh, how would you like to proceed from here? Uh, do you, if you leave this open, at some point, we will have to close this. Maybe, uh, maybe your attorney would like to speak for you. You had your screen off, so. The, if you leave it open, would you want to withdraw it and come back? Um, you filed it as a final, so I don't know what, how you want to do this, but you tell us, we, uh, if you can You filed it as a final, so I don't know what, how you want to do this, but you tell us, we, uh, if you can show material pro, you know, some sort of assured moving forward for the future, that'd be great. I just don't think we're there yet. And you heard all the comments and all the questions, so tell us what you would like to do. How would you like to handle this application?
Well, I think we, we need to keep it open, obviously, and, uh, I think we need to have a discussion of our team, uh, taking into consideration the comments of the commission tonight and as well as the neighborhood. And, uh, and, and see where we might make improvements to this or, uh, come up with further, um, evidence of, uh, the progress we've made or the progress that we think we can make. And as well as making sure that the, uh, commission and the neighborhood, um, is, uh, is largely comfortable with what we're proposing and confident that we're going to be able to do what we say we're doing or, or can do in addition to what we've already done. So I think that's going to take some thought, and, uh, so I don't want to speak for the team too prematurely, but I, I think we need to, uh, you know, get together again and take it all into consideration.
And that, uh, because what I've heard boiled down is there's not enough data to encourage the commission to make an, a positive positive outcome of this application at this time, that they are looking for more information for a decision of I, of either kind, really, positive or negative. Mr. LaRoe, did you want to add something to that?
Uh, yeah, two things, Madam Chair, and I think one of those, what Tracy's raising her hand about. But, uh, first, uh, for this application and all applications that are open tonight, we would need a max extension because with the four weeks off and a very crowded January schedule already, uh, we need, as, we need flexibility to schedule these. So if Mr. Haslam would be so kind as to give us that, we'd really appreciate it. And then I believe Ms. Kulikowski has some letters that she needs to read into the record, uh, as requested from residents.
Okay. Can we limit you to three minutes? No more than three minutes per letter, ma'am, as we have limited.
If someone tells me when I hit the three minutes, sure, I, I. The, the, they are, a couple of them are long, I, I will say.
So since we limited all other members of the public to three minutes, we would limit you to the same for each letter. Um, Patrick, if you would do that, and please holler, Patrick, because I don't always hear the little ding.
Right, and also for the court reporter, I have these in writing if you would like me to provide them to you.
Okay, that's great, then I won't stop you.
Okay.
May I just inquire, Madam Chair, um, before you start, would this include letters that were written from people that have spoken this evening, uh, already?
No, I took, I took that letter out, these, these are people that could not attend the meeting this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
But the, but the letters are already in the record and have been provided to you and to the commission.
But that was a great question, Mr. Haslam.
No, I, I took that one out, I took, I took that letter out, so I won't.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so we're three, no more than three minutes per letter, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, we are aware Greenwich Academy has a request for the Planning and Zoning Board to consider, and we are vehemently opposed to GA's application to increase its student enrollment. Our house at three North Street is located at the intersection of North Street, North Maple, and looks over Patterson Avenue. From the west side, our intersection usually has quite heavy traffic for most of the day, but there are times when it is really very heavy traffic with a buildup of cars in many directions. This is despite GA's new busing initiative. We are aware that GA has begun a, has begun a busing option, but it seems usage and passenger density have a lot of room for improvement so far. From a traffic noise backup, et cetera, the busing has not had a noticeable effect. The traffic coming down North Street starts, uh, building at seven fifteen every school morning. It continues to increase until about seven fifty in the afternoon. It starts building back up at two-thirty PM and is much heavier than normal until about three-thirty or four. The sound of car tires, engines, brakes, honking, et cetera, during this time is heavier than other times. These sounds are not pleasant, and we do not want them to increase from already high levels. The traffic also builds up on North Maple Avenue at a, at drop-off and pickup times, blocking circulation in both directions. Traffic police are needed to keep the cars moving. Despite this, there's still backup. There is also a very long line of cars along Patterson Avenue during the same times. The same goes for Maple Avenue. It is challenging for a, from a pedestrian safe, for a pedestrian to safely cross the street during these times, even using the crosswalks. Uh, the traffic builds and backs up on North Street, so that it is hard to enter and exit our driveway in the morning and afternoon. The noise from heavy car traffic is very loud. The traffic and noise can be heard from inside the house from almost every room with all the windows closed and locked. Again, this is three North Street. We run air purifiers, uh, with fans on all three floors of the house twenty-four hours a day to help cover traffic noise and handle indoor air pollution dust caused by the very heavy traffic. When the drivers nearing the intersection are impatient, there's a lot of honking. This happens throughout the day. But it is especially loud during the school drop-off and pickup time windows when there's very heavy car circulation and drivers trying to drop off, uh, children. Air pollution, when we're in the yard, which is, uh, quite a bit since, um, Nikki Negrea is an avid gardener and keeps a close watch on the plants, the smell from car fumes and diesel motors is noticeable. It is not a pleasant odor. We often avoid being outside for prolonged periods in the yard when street traffic is very heavy due to smell and noise. We consider ourselves good neighbors. We maintain the public garden on town property filled with thousands of spring bulbs and cheerful summer annuals visible from Patterson Avenue facing the bottom of North Maple Avenue. This bed is visible to all pedestrians, car traffic, and neighbors walking in the area. We also maintain an array of clipped deciduous flowering pear trees and green giant arborvitae along the sidewalk at the bottom of North Street. Um, this is also public property and provides beautiful paths for runners, et cetera. Got it?
And that was Nikki Negrea who sent that.
At three North Street.
N-E-G-R-E-A?
A, yes. And Nikki, N-I-C-C-I. I have another letter from three North Street, but this is from, um, her husband, whose name I don't have right in front of me, hang on. Just flew right out of my head, sorry. Dan.
All right, well, we'll give it, make sure the court reporter has it.
Yep, I, I will send these to her. Uh, dear Tracy, uh, we have read the traffic survey and traffic volume analysis dated November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, prepared by Kim Lee Horn at the request of GA and view of GA's application requesting an increase in enrollment of fifty students. I have lived at three North Street at the corner of North Maple for twenty years and plan to stay here for many more decades. The introduction to GA's analysis notes that the intersection of Patterson Avenue and North Maple are projected to have traffic reduced by twenty-five to thirty percent. My second-floor window faces west directly towards and over this intersection. I spend a lot of time early morning time in my office. Between early twenty-twenty-two and late fall twenty-twenty-three, I have not noticed any reduction in traffic at this intersection. GA's Traffic Demand Management, TDM, plan is, and I quote, "an experimental program that is not yet working and effective to reduce traffic, as I will demonstrate and prove below." One of the first statistics listed in the analysis is a count of nine-hundred-and-fifty-three vehicles entering campus between seven fifteen and eight fifteen on one day, unspecified in January. It is not stated in the analysis, but a logical interpretation may understand it to be twenty-twenty-two, I am guessing. The analysis does not precisely note the year twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three. Nine-hundred-and-fifty vehicles entering campus within one hour is a huge number of vehicles. This count was noted while there were seven forty-four enrolled students. Later in the same section, the analysis notes there were eight-hundred-and-ninety-three vehicles counted between seven fifteen and eight fifteen on one day, unspecified in October. The calendar year is not written in the analysis after this number, it could be twenty-twenty-two or twenty-three. A logical interpretation may understand it to be twenty-twenty-three, but again, I am guessing. Eight-hundred-and-ninety-three vehicles is still a huge number entering campus during a one-hour period. The analysis prepared for GA claims there is a reduction of fifty, sixty vehicles, but the methodology of the analysis relating to bus use by students does not actually count students getting off the bus in person on campus premises in the morning on any one day. For GA's purported improved TDM to be valid and meaningful, a real actual student count getting off the bus onto campus in the morning over several days should be done. This count was not done and sho- shown in the analysis dated November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. Support for GA's request is further eroded by the following facts noted in the analysis. GA considers bus signups to be equivalent to real counted students actually taking the bus. Since the analysis does not provide statistics of students getting off the bus onto campus in the morning, the phrase "bus signups" does not carry any real significance, just because families sign up for the bus does not mean they're actually taking the bus, as my observations of ongoing very high traffic have noted. The analysis states on page four, paragraph two, that with the addition of another fifty students and with TDM measures in place, it further states the number of trips is projected to increase from eight ninety-three to nine forty-three plus fifty is ten fewer in January by addition of the month.
Thank you.
Yep. And one more. This is from, um, Marcus.
From the meeting. Just kidding, this is Marcus Tarkington?
This is Marcus Tarkington. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission staff and members of the public. I am Marcus Tarkington. I am a longtime resident of seventy-six Hillside Drive, our property about GA, Molly King Campus on Rid- Ridge U Avenue. I have spoken numerous times over the years on the impact of the neighborhood of various PZ and ZNZBA applications by GA in Brunswick. I request that the records of the Planning and Zoning Commission Site Plan two-one-two-eight Decision Letter dated August ninth, two thousand, and the PZBA Appeal eight-four-five-five Decision Letter of April twenty-fourth, two thousand be incorporated by reference into the school's application. One of the issues I have addressed on a regular basis was the need for a school traffic management plan and the plan to include the increased busing of students. The August ninth, two thousand, uh, Special Permit two-one-two-eight Decision Letter contained modifications. Number four, school creative policy to increase car and van pooling and bus utilization to reduce the number of vehicles entering and exiting the site daily. This will be part of an annual review of the school's traffic management plan to be submitted by December to the P and Z and Traffic Engineer for review and comment. Can I ask whether the school complied with the terms of the modification in the annual submission of a traffic management plan as stipulated in the decision letter? Based on test statistics cited in the application materials, twenty-three years after the original commission decision, I conclude the school has made little progress in, in increased busing of students. The results of the busing test with only two days of data are not material. Only one-hundred-and-eighty-six students, about tw- only twenty-five percent of total student enrollment registered for the busing program. The number of buses increased from a very low base of only three buses, again, after twenty-three years since the original decision to ten buses currently. Only one-hundred-and-nine students, fifty-eight percent of the bus-registered students, or fifteen percent of the total student enrollment rode the buses to school in the morning. Only thirty-six students, only nineteen percent of the bus-registered students, or five percent of the total student enrollment rode the buses in the afternoon. Again, not material results, especially compared to the excitement the school had suggested during the first meeting with the neighbors prior to the test. And there's no assurance that the busing initiative will continue and support the requested increase in the enrollment cap. Finally, I would like to mention for the record, there was a change in the town's zoning enforcement. The gentleman I dealt with regularly for assistance and support on neighborhood issues was a zoning enforcement officer. At the time, Jim Maloney, however, I understand, Planning and Zoning has since taken over responsibility for zoning enforcement. We, the neighbors, rely on your diligence, support in the enforcement of your decisions. If the school had not made an application to P and Z, the neighbors and commission would probably not have focused on the school's current cap violation status. I find it disingenuous for the school to apply for the requested cap increase, given the disappointing busing test statistics and the school's current enrollment cap violation status, not a good example for the students.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm, that's all.
So that's, uh, so, uh, Tracy and, and, and Ms. Kulikowski, in the work you were doing for this application, uh, you had been referring to all the material from the year two thousand. I was going to suggest, uh, Mr. Haslam says he's read a lot of it, but you might want to connect with him, make sure he has all the material that refers to an ongoing busing that, that they were going to start doing bus or carpool or van, and that that was a condition of uh, their initial approval. I believe that not all of the conditions carried forward from two thousand, uh, but at least the, the school should be familiar with what was initially discussed. I think that might be hel- informative to the, moving forward.
Okay. Director has shared everything with me that she's shared with you tonight and more, um, including the letter.
Lucky you, because it was, yeah, three hundred pages that we were trying to get through today on your behalf, um, from the two thousand application. Fortunately, we got a lot of help. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Haslam.
Um, no, I just wanted to say that, yes, we had read that back in, in, in the spring too, but I really appreciate Tracy's again saying it to us and, and.
All right. So we're going to leave this, we're going to continue this application?
Yes, for the moment, and we're going to, um, keep the full, uh, extension, uh, to, to.
You'll give us the full extension? Um, we're curious how you're going to address the current overage, of course. Uh, and, um, we look forward to seeing you again and hope that you can have some great ideas in this regard. And Ms. Haslett, it was a pleasure seeing you. I hope Greenwich is treating you, treating you well. Thank you very much, folks.
Yep, good night.
All right. If, um, oh, but that was quick, okay, um, just Eric is left, is hiding. And you know, Eric, it's funny, it's blurring you as well as your background. Ooh. That was odd. I guess it's working. Okay, there. All right, uh, for our next application still in the public hearing, it's the Brunswick School for a Final Site Plan and Special Permit to Make Renovations to the East Side of Property, including circular paths and outdoor classroom space, relocating a crosswalk from east to the west of the campus and revisions to the previously approved but not yet constructed additions to, well, that's a repetition, to the education buildings on, on properties located at ninety-five and a hundred Maher in the R-twenty and R-six zone. And with that, well, Mr. Hegney, what a pleasure to see you.
Well, same here, Madam Chair, uh, good evening, uh, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this is a modernization of the main, uh, uh, classroom building uh, on the Mar Avenue campus, as well as providing for, uh, improvements to the site to unify the campus better. Uh, as you indicated, Madam Chair, there were two recent approvals, uh, one in two thousand seventeen, where we were looking to add seven-hundred-and-seven square feet as part of expanding the, the library within the, the existing building. And again, last year, uh, you, uh, you approved a, uh, in addition for the Health and Wellness Center, which was seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-nineteen square feet. Uh, those have not been constructed and they've been incorporated into this master plan. So rather than building both of those, we're looking to build seven-thousand-five-hundred-four square feet. Much of that space has, uh, already been approved by you, so we're only two-hundred-and-eighty-five square feet beyond what you had approved last year, uh, with the Health and Wellness Center. I want to first say that there is no increase in the number of students as part of these renovations uh, and no change in the program that's being offered at Brunswick. Uh, these are mainly, uh, mechanical upgrades, uh, and, uh, specifically to the air conditioning system uh, for the entire building, which currently does not exist. We received, uh, two variances for the classroom building. Uh, one, uh, was to allow for a, a greater roof height, no higher than the existing peak of the roof, but over a greater area. Uh, and secondly, for a cupola to provide a, a central focus, uh, for the main entrance to the building. Both of those were granted by the Board of Appeals. Uh, site improvements or a better entrance and walking paths, uh, between, uh, the buildings uh, and, uh, relocating a, a driveway, uh, which has been reviewed by, uh, uh, the town engineer. Uh, we're also on the east side, providing, uh, some outdoor construction, uh, instruction space behind the, the building that faces to, uh, Maple Ave. We reviewed these plans with ARC, uh, at their August second and at their, uh, September twentieth meeting. Uh, and, uh, the, the, just quote briefly, well, it's a whole decision, uh, from, uh, the, uh, uh, September twentieth meeting. ARC thanks the applicant architect and landscape architect for the well-thought-out design and presentation. ARC founds, finds that the project can move forward with P and Z review. Uh, we had gone through a number of changes, uh, and, um, had provided, uh, answers to all of the issues that they had brought up. The one thing that this does not include, uh, is a security kiosk, uh, the aforementioned, uh, uh, guard shed. And, uh, we applied for a variance for its location near Ammar Avenue. Uh, and even though we had a number of neighbors supporting the application, uh, the Board of Appeals did not choose to grant that, uh, variance. Uh, we have provided the, uh, landscape plan, which provides trees on the east side. This is a plan that uh, John Conti prepared, uh, after there was an issue regarding trees that were removed because of of hazards and, uh, and the poor condition of the trees. Uh, on the west side, uh, we do have a landscape plan, uh, to replace some of the evergreens, uh, that are being removed. Also have one, uh, where they, some of the trees that are existing there, they're in really good condition and can be moved, will be moved for a short time while we bring in the crane to be able to put the uh, mechanical equipment on the roof of the building. Uh, both, uh, east and west sides meet the green area requirement. On the west side, there was a question of, uh, floor area, uh, uh, and whether we were in compliance. What we're proposing, which again is only two hundred and eighty-five square feet of what you approved a year ago, is a hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and forty-two square feet. Uh, what's permitted based on the lot area in the two zones, the R six and the R twenty is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. So there's a cushion of seven thousand square feet there. I understand it's within, uh, ten percent of the, uh, uh, of the maximum F A R. So as part of our zoning approval, uh, we will be submitting uh, floor area worksheets that, uh, the zoning enforcement staff can review prior to issuing the, uh, zoning permit. Uh, we submitted a letter, uh, signed by the school, uh, saying that we would abide by the sewer comments. Uh, we actually do have sewer permits, uh, to do the work. We've been working with the sewer department for quite a while on that. Uh, lastly, a couple of things, uh, we have added two E V charging stations to the east side uh, in that parking lot and, uh, we're actually reducing coverage on the east side, uh, with the revisions to the driveway and the paths. So overall, again, it's a, um, mainly mechanically and upgrading the facility, uh, and incorporating the prior approvals, uh, and, uh, providing better circulation on site. And we would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Um, any questions from the Commission? Mr. Mackray?
Uh, Mr. Hegney, the, so the landscape plan that we received for the west side, um, just, uh, just recently seems, it lots of things had been removed. Uh, specifically large evergreens, uh, it looks like a a very large deciduous. And that i- i- it shows a a lot of plantings to be removed and then replanted. But I'm not actually physically seeing those on the site now. Um, and the landscape plan doesn't doesn't specifically say what's gonna be put back in other than a new evergreen tree. Um, it would be best, and I think actually our site plans now with the regulations provide that actually that be an honest-to-God landscape plan, so we know what's gonna supposed to be out there. Um, I'm sure that you heard in the, uh, the, uh, briefing that we talked about what, you know, what makes this campus actually work on Mar Avenue is the fact that we have these mature trees on both sides of the street. And that that fact actually makes it blend in with the neighborhood. Uh, so not as in to impose itself as a commercial structure on this tree-lined street, if you would. Um, so if if Mr. Conti could actually put together a landscape plan for the east-west side, that would be great, so we can incorporate that into the detailed, uh, landscape plan that you have for the east side.
Yeah, we we do, we do have landscape architects with SLAM, our architectural firm that is that has put the, uh, master plan together, and they have been working with Mr. Conti. Uh, we will, uh, provide greater specification on this. It wa- we did, uh, provide that to the Architecture Review Committee. I I submitted this because I thought that this was very descriptive as to what's going on on the west side. Uh, but we can provide all that information a- as part of staff review.
Right, I think actually that you're seeing it, seeing it here with the, um, uh, in front of us, those, uh, beige circles actually are all the trees, the mature trees that were taken down. Um, I think that's a kind of a significant thing for us to understand about, you know, what's happened out there, uh, at the site.
As you can see, driving down Mar Avenue, as you referred to, uh, Mr. Mackray, uh, the the building is very well screened, uh.
Yes, it is.
Taking photographs for the, uh, for the, for the A R C and Z B A meetings. Uh, it was sort of hard to get a a really good picture of the buildings themselves, uh, and we're looking to replicate that uh, as part of, uh, uh, replacing the trees that are gonna be removed. But again, uh, in order to get that mechanical equipment, uh, we had talked about, could we do it from the street and uh, the, uh, mechanical engineers did not think that the equipment could be placed on the roof uh, without having access to that particular area.
Okay. Um, Mr. Mackray, anything else from Mr. Wells?
Uh, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, yeah, uh, the, uh, Mr. Hegney, the, uh, Energy Management Advisory Committee memo came in late on Monday, so you probably haven't had a chance to look at it or your engineers, but I just do wanna highlight a couple of points in it, and maybe your engineers could respond, uh, you know, in in due time. Uh, their their first point is, uh, the the memo says on page, uh, two, uh, based on our analysis, it is anticipated that the proposed renovation will consume approximately fourteen percent less energy cost, less energy by cost annually than the baseline building compliant with ASHRI two thousand thirteen. Uh, just wanna point out Connecticut Building Code two thousand twenty-two requires compliance with ASHRI two thousand nineteen. So just from the surface, it looks like the the engineers may be using, you know, an older, out-of-date, uh, Energy Efficiency Guideline. So I mean, if they're able, I think they have the numbers, if they're able to run it against the two thousand nineteen standard, that would be helpful. Uh, the other two points are are kind of technical, and I'll probably mix it up, but I'll, I'll, uh, I'll mention, in the memo, they talk about the use of a a variable refrigerated system, uh, both for cooling and for heating. And number one, and then then replacing your gas boilers with with newer condensing gas boilers. I I think the main thrust of energy management is to try and get away from, uh, you know, fossil fuels. So I'm just gonna read a couple of their comments, and maybe our engineers could respond. Uh, regarding the, uh, variable refrigerated system, refrigerant system, quote, "We should point out that V R F systems have been found to have the highest fifty-year lifestyle cause driven by the expected need to replace the entire system in the next two to three decades because of the R four-ten A. That's a refrigerant phase-out beginning in two thousand thirty." If if they could comment on that, that that would be really helpful. And then the final point regarding heating is the applicant intends to use low-temperature hot water for perimeter heating. If this is the case, the need for boilers could be replaced with highly efficient hydronic heat pumps, i.e. non-non-fossil fuel heat pumps. This would offer the ability, the the building, the ability to operate the H V A system without gas, providing greater budget certainty. Natural gas prices have skyrocketed and remain volatile, lower cost, and less C O two and nitrous oxide emissions. Moreover, if a heat pump central plant is considered, it might be able to replace the V R A, V R F system and provide both chilled water and hot water to the hydraulic, uh, fan coils. So really, sort of those three things, they made some other points as well, but if if your engineers could respond to the staff, that that would be very helpful and very much appreciated.
Uh, certainly, Mr. Wells, and you know, our our goal is to, uh, not only meet but exceed uh, the building code requirements, uh, and, uh, we will, uh, share this with our, uh, mechanical engineers and see if there can't be additional upgrades as part of all of the mechanical system upgrades that are going on within the building.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, Mr. Hegney, do you think that you could get us the F A R numbers before we close this application? It the blended F A R is always, it's always a bit of a struggle for me. I I would like to know that we are compliant. You know, we've had some schools that have kind of slipped over the line. I see that your numbers are are okay. But I would like to see them. And then I had a second question. You have in your narrative, I think you make reference of making your the green area compliant, but it seems to already be compliant.
It it is. On all right, on both campuses, both sides.
Okay, so that was just a typo, or did I misunderstand you?
That was a typo on my part.
Oh, okay. Um, is there penance for that?
Uh, only on Tuesday evenings.
Okay, um, would you guys be able to get us the, um, the F A R numbers since you are so close? Before we close this?
Madam Chair, I have I have two points on that. One is, um, I wasn't asked for that in two thousand twenty-two when I had two thou- seven thousand two hundred and plus, uh, two hundred and nineteen, uh, square feet, and we're only adding two hundred and eighty-five square feet above that. Uh, we are, although we are closer, uh, we're still seven thousand square feet below the actual uh, uh, maximum that could be, uh, built on the campus. And, uh, I certainly, w- we would have done that if we had gone ahead and done the F A R uh, calculations to submit to zoning enforcement if we were building what you approved a year ago. Uh, and, uh, I I have no doubt, having gone over this uh, with, uh, Dave Ginter at, uh, Redness and Mead, uh, that we are certainly within what is permitted. And, uh, we will be providing that both to staff as part of the zoning permit sign-off memo, and then again to zoning enforcement when we go in for a zoning permit. So I I believe that there is ample uh, review that will occur before we're ever at the point of putting a shovel in the ground.
Anything else from the Commission?
No.
Alright, uh, do I have any comments on this application? This is for the Brunswick School um, at ninety-five and a hundred Maher Avenue? Any public comments? The Brunswick School, ninety-five and a hundred Maher Avenue? Alright, no public comment. Um, so let me ask you guys this, um. We want some more detail on the landscape plan. We've got some questions about the energy narrative. Uh, we were interested in seeing the F A R. Uh, we would like to understand the tree replacement on the west side. Uh, where do you guys wanna, where do you guys come out on closing this application versus leaving it open?
Good, good to close.
Anybody else?
Close it and condition it.
Mr. Mackray?
Um. I think we can close this.
Okay. Alrighty. Alright, so this application is hereby closed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hegney, okay, folks, it's six forty-five. You wanna try to get through Eagle View before we go to dinner?
Well, alrighty. I don't know that I do.
I'd rather have dinner.
Thank you.
That's, but I'm I'm an alternate, so I have no say.
Okay.
No, 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 we don't have a cast system here. Don't be silly. That's.
Not a matter of dinner, uh, equal standing.
Alright, we have two votes for dinner. Mr. Hegney would like to proceed because he wants to finish, but, um, we have two votes for dinner.
Yeah, well, Mr. Hegney, I don't believe in this instance gets a vote, I'm just saying.
No, he doesn't. I think we've closed it. We're in decision mode right now.
I would prefer all of the Commission members to be happy and
Alright.
Be satiated before we proceed with any further hearings.
I thought you said this was closed. He's not allowed to speak now, right?
We're in.
And he's spreading holiday cheer, it seems like.
And we're not allowed, and he's not allowed to speak when we're in decision mode. Alright, you guys, we've got we've got some people who are gonna be grumpy if they don't get dinner, so let's give them dinner. Um, six forty-seven P M. Uh, and twenty minutes is seven oh, seven tens? Is that right? Seven seventeen? Seven seventeen.
It's a number, but.
Seven seventeen. God, do not put me to work in a bank. Okay, you guys, see you in twenty.
Well, is that, it's seven oh seven is what you're doing.
Oh, whatever it was that I can't add today.
Twenty minutes, right, twenty?
In twenty minutes, we'll see you, and Patrick will put up the sign.
Thank you.
Alright.
Good evening, Madam Chair, again.
Okay. So our next application is the sixth in for the evening. It is Eagle View Holding LLC for Final Site Plan and Special Permit to Demolish an Existing two hundred and seventeen-bed Skilled Nursing Facility and Construct a five-story, two hundred and fifteen-unit set-aside development pursuant to Section eight-thirty-G of the Connecticut General Statutes. Thirty percent of the units will be deemed affordable as defined under state law. And with that, Mr. Hegney, uh, when last we saw you, we, um, had this issue of the sewer service. So if you would like to pick up there, that would be fine. You've sent a letter.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, and, uh, good evening again, Commission members. For the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. Uh, we left this open, uh, from the November twenty-eighth meeting so that we could resolve, uh, the sewer issue. Uh, in the meantime, you received a letter from the, uh, County of Westchester, um, which raised a number of issues. Uh, we responded, uh, to that letter, uh, but have not been able to, uh, engage with them, uh, to, uh, resolve it. To to put the numbers very briefly, uh, they're using a hundred and fifty gallons a day per bedroom, uh, and we're using a hundred and ten gallons per day per bedroom, uh, because we would be using, uh, 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 more efficient, uh, fixtures as part of the new construction. Um, we have not been able to resolve that. Uh, so, uh, since this is a key issue, uh, for us, uh, as part of moving forward with this, I have submitted a a letter to staff indicating that we will will convert this to a preliminary plan. And that will give us the opportunity to, uh, resolve this with Westchester County and the Village of Rybrook, uh, discuss the ownership question, which uh, the 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 same owners are involved with both Greenwich Woods and Eagle View Holding. Um, and we have to make that clear and provide that to to Westchester as well. Uh, uh, discuss with them the cancellation period of the thirty days, uh, because I know that that was another issue that the the Commission had concern about in the event that it was necessary to replace, uh, the connection to the Westchester Sewer System. Uh, and also that we would, uh, do more of a feasibility study, including uh, test holes and and soil testing uh, in the area that is set aside, reserved for a backup septic system on the property, that four-acre parcel. So that we have more information to share with you on that, uh, as well. So, uh, we were unable to accomplish all these things, uh, between the last meeting and tonight. Uh, and that's why we wanna convert it to a preliminary and would hope you could, uh, look at it in that fashion uh, so that we can address these, uh, these issues that are important. uh, so that we can address these, uh, these issues that are important issues of this particular project.
And you would, um, want us to close the preliminary tonight?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Cause I think we have to, right? Because when you convert it, the date doesn't change, right? I always
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, okay. All right, so based on that, folks, um, converted to preliminary, uh, does anybody have any further questions or comments?
Um, I would only think that, uh, as part of the, the part B of this, of the, the alternate plan, um, the area, I, if I am understanding it right, the area that the septic system or proposed septic system would be is subject to an easement according to the plan. It'd be very good to know what that easement is for, how that affects any kind of construction in that. Um, I think feasibility is a really great idea, but I think actually understanding the nature of what could potentially could go bad on this development. If for some reason you can't, can't discharge into Westchester as it is, then your backup as a septic system, significant septic system really needs to be thought out and I would say discussed with, uh, the Health Department to make sure that this is going to work because it's not just, oh, it's a house. It's how many units? That's an awful lot of water going into the ground. And is this really going to work? It is the actual construction of it, which is significant, uh, require its own special, uh, uh, attention.
Mr. Hegney?
Certainly, Mr. McRae. Now, what, we, we will be reviewing that to make sure that this is not just, uh, a, a possibility, but has feasibility with it as well.
Well, um, the other thing is, you know, we talked about this, if, and also if you can't, if you have a problem with Westchester County, this may be the way you proceed. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, we got into that whole thing about the thirty-day notice from Westchester should, for non-payment, uh, for cancellation, for unilateral cancellation. It, uh, would be good if you could get that extended to something to allow you, allow the development to have some sort of wastewater treatment. Uh, go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Hegney, go ahead.
I just wanted to respond to that, Madam Chair. Uh, we're looking at somewhere between three and six months necessary to finalize the septic design.
Good.
Uh, get approval and then install it. So, uh, that, that's assuming we have the information necessary to address what Mr. McRae was referring to earlier.
And so you would ask Mr., you would ask Westchester County to give you a six-month notice?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ms. Jenkins?
Yes, uh, Mr. Hegney, I'm just a, a little, I need a little clarification. In your response to Westchester, you say that you, that there has not been a transfer of the property. I understand that, and therefore no assignment. But you reserve the right, uh, uh, trying, looking for the language here, Greenwich Woods intends to, intends to contact the County of Westchester if and when it elects to transfer the property. It's my understanding that it's not an election on your part. It actually has to be agreed to by Westchester County. So I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea that at such time as it's appropriate from a business point of view, what comfort we get that Westchester agrees to the transfer.
Uh, I think we need to have this conversation with them right up front now as part of the overall issues that I brought up earlier. Uh, but it, it's, right now, the, the property is in Greenwich Woods Realty. Uh, the same family owns, uh, uh, Eagle View Holding. So, uh, i-if Westchester says, if you want to have a separate entity do the construction for this, um, uh, for this, uh, apartment development, then we will have that discussion with them now before we come back to you.
Okay, I, I appreciate that because I don't want the element of it, of uncertainty that's involved in the election that we, that hasn't been discussed with them. And I'm, I'm sure you'll handle that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Yaski?
Yes, Mr. Hegney, um, I understand you have to negotiate or talk to Westchester. But the first part of that initial conversation was your folks calculated flows of the, of the project somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-nine, um, thousand, right, on an average basis? And our first point was, your deal is fifty. Are you planning to also up that fifty to a higher number? Even, you know, using your one-ten? It just sounds like it's unbelievably tight. Um, i-is, are you planning to stick at fifty or are you going to go a little bit higher?
Uh, the, in going over this, we think that it makes sense to have, uh, a discussion on all of these points, including the, uh, the total flow. Uh, we pay Westchester depending on how much water we use. Uh, so, uh, they, they may not have an issue with the, uh, uh, with increasing that number. Uh, the pipe that goes from the facility to the Westchester main, uh, has more than adequate capacity. It can handle a million gallons a day. So that, that's not an issue. And I don't think the sewer plant that it feeds into has an issue of capacity. So, uh, we, we do want to have that, that discussion with them. That, that will be part of the overall review of this. Uh, I would add that we were using the one hundred and ten gallons per bedroom for not only the two hundred and fifteen apartments, but also for the thirty beds at, uh, the Greens at Greenwich, at the assisted living facility. And then, uh, Rybrook asked us to add in thirteen gallons a day per bedroom for, uh, laundry beyond the one-ten. So that's what brought us up to the, the, the forty-nine thousand. And, um, and it, yes, as, as the commissioner's pointed out earlier, it, it does get close. And, uh, and, uh, we, we don't want to have a situation where, uh, we would be exceeding what is permitted under the agreement.
I'm glad you hear your, I'm, I'm glad to hear you're open and you're going to negotiate. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have questions or comments? Mr. Levy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to make sure that, um, I understand um, what you may come back with regarding, um, an, an al-al alternative or option to, um, Westchester County, uh, sewer. Um, so I assume, and I, and I, I don't really want to assume, I just, that you'd come back and, and lay out the timing of when the, um, you know, if and when the agreement lapses with Westchester County and the installation of the alternative system. So anyway, you know what to do. I'm just want to make sure that
But good point. It's the same thing, the same thing. Good point, Mr. Levy. It's the same thing we were asking a minute ago. And, um, Mr. Hegney said he thinks they could go from, um, planning to implementation on the septic in six months. Um, that septic, Mr. Hegney, has to be approved by the state, right? Because of the size?
Well, I'm, I'm looking for Local Health Department is going to approve a septic like this.
No, so, um, so, Mr. Levy, um, that's the thing that they, they, that we were saying to them that they should ask Westchester on, if Westchester gives them the agreement and they retain the right to unilaterally cancel it, that that unilateral cancellation window be extended to accommodate the installation of the alternate wastewater treatment facility on site.
Right, so when, when I, my, my understanding of a timeline is you, you have, uh, the agreement and what it says in the agreement. And then you have, um, uh, uh, an understanding from contractors who are going to do the work, how long they think it's going to take.
Right.
Uh, you know, you, you fill in all the different pieces because there are a few, few moving pieces here.
Yes.
Uh, that, that, that's, I just wanted to make sure that I understood what they were going to do. And, um, I don't know if they, they have a different way of looking at it, but that's the way I am looking at it.
Got it. Okay, yes. There are a lot of moving pieces because our basic point has been that for the health and safety of future residents, there must be some sort of wastewater treatment available, whichever one it is. So they have to, they either, they either have to make sure they can keep, they can get Westchester in place and guaranteed. Um, or they have to be able to trigger full implementation of an onsite. The other thing that we raised at the last meeting was this issue, uh, that was about the term of the agreement of the SDA with Westchester because the SDA right now expires before the forty years would be up for the eight thirty-G. And so the question is, as they do this with Westchester, could they add three more years? Could you add three more years or whatever you estimate? So from CO of the new building, you have the full forty years of eight thirty-G. Mr. Hegney?
Uh, I, I did take it as a question, Madam Chair.
You were thinking, I'm so sorry.
We're looking, I, I was actually just making a note that you had brought up this point. Um, the, uh, yes, very much so. Uh, we would, that's one of the other issues that we want to go over, uh, with Westchester. So that we could show that, that, that will be a forty-year term from issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
Yes, okay. And, and well, they're not going to know when your CO is, so you're going to have to pick a number that's conservative and work. I had one other question for you on this, which was, when they do these calculations, one of the biggest challenges we have in town with our sewer lines and our treatment is, and what happens with our, with our line capacity is inflow and infiltration. Do these, S, does the SDA have INI built into it? In the, in the out years, like, are they assuming? Because the letter from Westchester was interesting. They said, today the flows are thirty-two thousand and it can go to a max of fifty. So there's a big window. Now, a big cushion. Now the question is, what happens over time is, if there's a risk of INI? Now, I assume new lines aren't going to have the same risk as our ancient, our older lines, I should say, in town do. Um, any thoughts on that?
Yes, we, we have roughly two thousand square feet, uh, two thousand lineal feet of, uh, sewer line that runs from the property to the Westchester main. Uh, and Rybrook, uh, since it's through, uh, their roads, has asked us to provide a camera uh, analysis of it and to determine if any repairs are needed. It, it's been there since the eighties. Uh, fair question on their part. Uh, and also something that we're, we're looking to, uh, to address.
Okay, all right. No, that wasn't, they didn't ask the INI question, but since we're haunted by it.
Uh, that, that, that's, that's what the camera would, would look to see. Is there, are there any flaws in the pipe uh, that would need to be repaired or, or lining done?
Okay, we will leave that
As we do with our sewer system.
We will leave that to your work with them. Mr. Levy, do you still have your hand up because you're chewing? That was a joke. All right, I'm lowering his hand. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on this? Mr. Low, you're just unmuted?
That's just in case I have an inspiration, I can share it with you. But not now.
Okay. Um, I think, um, I think we've covered all the other ground, um, in, in previous discussions. The only other thing that we mentioned yesterday, Mr. Hegney, uh, when you reach out to Westchester, it seemed that they wanted different people to be contacted. Um, and one of the things that keeps coming, that they're planning, Director, but one of the things that came up was this issue of the airport. You did submit in the letter that, that you all sent back to the county. You mentioned that the building structure itself was, had been, you had the attachment that the building structure itself had been found acceptable in height, but the comments we're getting are about the trees. I, and we do recognize that there is, um, an ability to, to reduce the height of the trees by the airport authority, I believe.
By Westchester County.
But we would like you to make sure, again, health and safety. We want to make sure that, um, the planting plan is acceptable to the Westchester, Westchester Airport Authority, which apparently is through their DPW.
Yeah, I, I assure you, we will not be planting any trees that at the time will be taller than the building we are constructing.
Just, but it depends on where the set is relative to the runways. I don't understand those things, where the approach is, whatever it is. Just make sure, not that the building, that the trees aren't going to be taller than the building, but that they don't have sightline issues for airplanes and clearance issues. That's all we're asking. Because, um, that there's no obstructions. Because you have to be able to see those rows of lights and I don't know. Okay. Um, anything else? From the commission? No. All right, uh, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? This is Eagle View Holding LLC. This is at eleven sixty-five King Street for a final site plan and special permit to convert Greenwich Woods into an eight thirty-G building. No comments from the public. Uh, does anybody on the commission object to closing this application at this time? This is again now converted to a preliminary.
No.
Madam Chair, can I ask if I'm seated on this?
Um, Mr. Levy? Um,
Did he want to take it back?
He wanted to take it back yesterday.
Okay.
Mr. Levy was then going to leave early tonight and may not, and will not be here when we go into decision. So I would like, if Mr. Levy, if he can hear me now. Mr. Levy? Um, okay, um, Ms. Jenkins, I would suggest, I think you should go back onto this because Mr. Levy, um, advised me that he would not be here for the discussion items. That being the case, he will not be here when we make the decisions. And therefore, I'd rather have you seated and know that, and I know you've been at all the meetings. So, um, even though he watched the video yesterday. Okay, so therefore this application for a preliminary is now a preliminary and it is hereby closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, so now we move forward once again to Greenwich American for a zoning text amendment to amend Section six, one-one-six of the Building Zone Regulations. This is to allow a residential use in the BEX fifty, which is where the Greenwich American Can proposal for residential development would be located. Uh, please note that this is a must-close tonight, this application. For this, Mr. Levy has also asked to be seated. Um, Mr. Levy, are you there? Um, Ms. Jenkins, I would suggest that you seat on this as well.
Yes.
Okay, because I think he's leaving before we go into decision mode. Um, so it's Jenkins for Levy. And we'll keep that. Okay, so, Mr. Hegney, please proceed. Um, and, uh, just, I think we've all read the changes in the language to the text amendment, but if you would like to give it a recap, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, for the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. Uh, some of the changes we had made for the November twenty-eighth meeting, and that was to add an inclusionary zoning requirement of twenty percent, uh, for, uh, uh, all of the units on site. And then provide in lieu of that, the payments that we have been discussing, uh, to the Housing Trust Fund. Uh, we, we did not, however, at that time, provide the requirements and conditions of handling affordable housing units. And so looking at the language that the commission adopted recently in six-one-ten, uh, I included that, uh, as part of Section four A uh, on the, uh, second page of the, uh, app, of the, uh, uh, amendment. And that includes the, uh, development of regulations, that, uh, tenants must meet the, uh, development of regulations, that, uh, tenants must meet the, uh, uh, the, uh, income requirements. They have to be physically integrated into the design. That they have to be dispersed throughout the development uh, to meet the requirements that, uh, were recently adopted in six, one, ten. Uh, and then provide an annual affidavit. The one thing that, uh, was up for discussion, uh, was whether it would be forty years or uh, for the restriction as in, uh, a, uh, uh, an AHU, and, uh, we have included here that the requirement would be that the, uh, affordable housing units would be in perpetuity. Um, one, one of the other points that, uh, I don't think we went over last time, uh, was that we've lowered the maximum height from fifty to forty-six feet. Uh, and that's really, we needed that for the, uh, twelve unit buildings, uh, which were in more, uh, uh, sloped areas of the site. And since we're not including those as part of the construction, uh, we, um, we lowered that. Uh, and we're also adding, uh, that, uh, there can be no more than three units in any one building, which was part of the discussion.
And that the max FAR for residential, did you touch on that? It continues to be point one, three?
Point one, three, yes.
Yep. Okay, I think we hit all the key elements. Uh, do you, does anybody in the commission have any comments on the uh, zoning regulation as revised? Uh, Ms. Jenkins, you mentioned a typo yesterday.
Um, yes, there's a typo in paragraph A where it says own rather than town.
I, I, I did pick that one up. And also in uh, four A on the, uh, fifth line or fourth line, the annual B meant, published annually by uh, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. And H needs to be capitalized too.
Come. Anything else from the commission regarding the zoning regulation, the text amendment? Does anybody from the public wish to speak on the proposed, uh, zoning text amendment for the BEX zone? Uh, as currently proposed and posted. I believe we received comments from Wes Cog? Patrick to the revised one and, um, they found that it had intermunicipal impact.
Right, with our, with our New York neighbors, which who we've been conversing with.
Okay. All righty, and whom we will continue to converse with. Okay. So does anybody from the public wish to comment on this application to revise our regulations to allow a residential use at, uh, in the BEX zone as we call it? Hearing and seeing no comment. Does anybody object to closing up this application at this time? Speak now or forever hold your peace. No, just kidding.
Nope.
Seeing no objection to closing this application, this application is hereby closed.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
With that, Ms. Cullen, you can go home. And look at that, seven thirty-six. Do not tell Mr. Bazili that we finished you that early. Or he. No, don't, cause for all the nights we've kept him till midnight.
I was hoping that would be the case. And it's even nicer, cause I am home. So thank you.
Thank you very much for helping us out.
Good night. Thank you.
Bye, Ellen.
Have a happy holidays.
You too.
Okay, we now go to the regular, back to the regular meeting on which the first item is a decision on Greenwich American Inc. for the preliminary site plan and special permit. And I would entertain happily a motion on that. Would that be?
We need to vote on the, we'd, we'd need to vote on the, uh, text amendment first.
Ah, okay.
So do you want to take as part of the decision discussion in, in total, or do you want to?
No, I think we should do it very separately. So let's do the text amendment first, and then let's do the preliminary site.
Do you want to do them all now, or do you want to wait to the end and do decisions at end?
Patrick, for some reason, put this as item eight. I would have done it all at the end, but there you go. So what do you guys want to do?
I, I recommend doing everything at the end. Let's get it all, let's get it, get through the.
Let's move on to the, to the discussion items. The first dis- discussion item is Jonathan and Karen Schmitz at two sixteen to two twenty East Putnam Avenue in the LBR two. And who is representing them?
I'm looking for them in the, there we are.
Lynn Laurie Duarte. All right. And Ms. Duarte, if you would unmute.
Hi.
Hello.
Hey there. I don't know why you're not seeing us start video. Maybe hit that one.
Um, your video may be going, but sometimes you need to reverse the way it's facing, or you have, there you go.
Hi.
Hey there.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, so what you'd like to do is to be able to add birthday parties and use the front entrance uh, uh, for, in general, because you could always direct your ADA and senior people to the front entrance right now. But you would like to be able to use it generally, and you would like to add birthday parties. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if you would just discuss that now?
Sure. So, um, so we have done some follow-up work since our previous meeting, and we wanted to share the, the details of our findings with you. Um, but first, we really wanted to thank you for your approval for us to open our business. We, we opened our doors, uh, the week of Fourth of July. And it has been really fantastic so far. We've had a great, um, sort of embrace from the community, the neighbors and our neighboring tenants. So, so we wanted to thank you for that. Um, so just to take us back to where we left off, you had asked us to explore, um, an encroachment permit. And this is regarding the adjacent, um, parking spaces next to our building. So that wasn't, um, possible from the state. So then we moved on to seeking a lease from the state. Um, so we spoke to Hartford and we walked down the path of, of obtaining a lease, um, to which they came back with a fifteen hundred dollar a month, um, amount and fee, which did not unfortunately include any maintenance or repairs to the existing lot. Um, which you know is in a little bit of a hard shape. So, um, it was way too much for us to afford. So we spoke to them, you know, to see if it was negotiable. Um, we offered five hundred, which was probably the max we could do, and they came down fifty dollars. So we, we, we said this is found money that, you know, the state hasn't been making a dime off of since nineteen.
Oh, yeah.
Then, you know, so five hundred is more than they have. Um, but that, there was no movement there. So, um, so right now, you know, just a little bit in terms of how it's been working, um, what we hoped was gonna happen has happened. And the back entrance has gone really, really well in terms of parents dropping off and picking up and adults coming to classes. That flow is really been great, and we, we would like to continue with that. We don't want to break something that's fixed. Um, when we're speaking about opening our front door, it's really where that is hurting us is in retail traffic um, as well. So a lot of people walking by, maybe one out of ten will, will come around the back. But more often than not, it just confuses people and, um, they get kind of mad at us. So, um, so we would like to have that. And, and also for people with strollers, um, and you know, some of the, some grandparents picking up, it would just be much easier if it was an easier access for them to be able to use that front door. Um, our staff has put in parking in the two back spots that we have as part of our lease agreement. Um, and that's worked out really well. The stat, the students, we've paid a lot of attention to where they're parking, where they're coming from. Um, primarily they'll park along, um, suburban or, um, along the front, East Putnam. Um, so that's been going well. We haven't had complaints from any of our, any of our students or parents. Um, so we've run in terms of data, I'm a numbers person, but we've run, um, seven weeks of summer camp. And we had thirty children each week. Um, and to date, we've run twelve weeks of weekly classes. So that's approximately a hundred children a week, um, with picking up and dropping off. So we have a pretty good data set showing that we feel comfortable that, you know, the current parking pickup drop-off model that we hoped would work is, is actually working well. Um, yeah, so I just.
Birthday parties. So on the birthday party thing, uh, you're thinking about Friday evening?
So it, it would be in, in replace of one of our classes. So like the last class of the day, instead of having a crafting class, we would have a birthday party.
Okay, and what times would you run them?
Six to seven thirty. And to just clarify for clarification of what a birthday party is, it's really, we, it's a craft class with cake. So we have our typical craft class. And we reserve the last twenty-five minutes for cake or cupcakes, whatever the, um, family chooses to serve. But operationally speaking, it's the exact same as one of our classes. It's the same number of children and it's the same amount of time. Um, it's also drop-off and it tends to be older children. So, um, we don't have, you know, it's not like we have little ones where parents hang out.
And when you're running the craft thing on Friday evenings right now, what time do you do that?
Um, well, we have two classes a day. So we have, um, three forty-five to five and five thirty to six forty-five.
Okay. Um, this is, um, this is the, and on Saturday, what time are you gonna do the birthday parties?
We would, we would do two. Um, one is ten to eleven thirty, and then the second one is one to two thirty. We like to have a good lag time in between to kind of allow the staff to reset and take a little break, clean.
So, uh, it's an informal request to you. The, the folks that are in that shopping strip with you, there is a pizza place, a liquor store, an ice cream place, and another food place. All of whom do a significant amount of business in the evening. And, um, oh, we get to read somebody's email. No. Right. I think I got all the key ones. There's the, the gelato place. Um, but, so the question is to, uh, my one concern is that when I've been in any of those locations on a Friday evening, they do a lot of business. I'd like to know that you've worked with your co-tenants, the other people on that block, just to make sure the time, cause for you, you could move a birthday party fifteen, twenty minutes either way. Right?
Absolutely, yes.
So just, if you could just talk to them and just make sure, um, I don't, not sure that anybody uses your, that where your parking anyway, and where, where your drop-off is. So I think you're fine, but that would just be my one concern, that everybody sort of be happy in the sandbox together retail-wise.
Absolutely. You know, and, and, um, Roost and our Currys, the two businesses that you're referencing have been absolutely phenomenal. They've been so great. The Roost family, um, has been so supportive and same with Jamie, our Curry, you know, we, we.
Right. And also, and also, I'm sure, I'm sure, um, I'm sure, uh, Randy's has been good with two. I've never been able to figure out what the habitat hours are.
They're so nice. Um.
And they're nice too. So, okay, so as long as you're working with them, that would be one of my concerns is just to make sure that all those locations are, none of those locations are impacted. And, um, we'll probably all, uh, Patrick, staff will probably talk to them. Um, any other comments from the commission regarding this? This.
I, I assume you're not providing food.
We do not.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, the parents bring the cake.
Yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the commission? So I think that the response that it seems like it's been going fairly well, and we were, there were really no, you're not seeing any major objections. We know it, the parking can be tight. Eventually, people always seem to find a parking spot in that area. So I think the commission is open to your application, and that would be the guidance we'd give you, as long as you've worked it out with neighbors and um, you can blend it, you can work well as a team with the rest of the retailers. All right.
It'd be amazing. Thank you so much.
Mr. LaRoe, you have your hand up.
Uh, but I just, I just want to be clear, so we understand the, the working it out is just understanding what the activities in the evening is what I heard, right? That, that we're not.
Um, it's really just actually for, um, it's somehow for us to know what the peak times are um, at the, at, like, at our queries.
Okay, so you, you want the applicant to, and to find out what those.
Just to kind of, just to say, hey, we've talked to them and we're not gonna interfere with their peak hours. Uh, we're gonna, you know, we know that you want them to succeed and they're gonna want you to succeed because all these COSCOB folks work together to make sure that it stays vib- vibrant as a village. And they're very, I find them very cooperative. So, um, if, as long as you're working with them and accommodating them, that would be my key concern. Not a zoning thing, just more, like, let's just make sure that everybody's on the same team. Anything else from anybody? No. So we'll see you when you come in.
Right. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, come back soon. That shouldn't be much, cause you don't have to do any really, we have the site, we have your drawings from before, so um, you should be able to be back soon.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now moving to another use in another neighborhood, we have, uh, OG Yoga LLC. And who is representing the applicant?
Ms. Clouberg should be joining us right now. There she is.
Hello, Ms. Clouberg. How are you all? Um, we're good. It was a little bit, we were dreading tonight, thinking it was gonna be super long, and so far we're moving. Um, so in, in regard to your application, you are, you're here because it is, uh, you're gonna have a higher parking requirement. At present, you only require five and a half spaces. I believe that's the right number. You would have nine students and one instructor, or at this point, two classes a day. Did I remember calling it correctly?
Yes, yes, I, um, there actually, I, I had submitted some time, um.
Yes, we saw that.
But that.
Just doing it from memory. Oh, it's changed. Okay.
Changed slightly. So I just want to tell you what the ideas are. Um, the weekday hours of the classes will be generally twice a day. Early classes running to seven to eight, and then another one from nine to ten. The nine AM classes aim to attract the parents who drop off their children at Old Greenwich at eight thirty. And the whole thing that the parents would head over to the studio after dropping children off at school. And then, um, an additional class will be offered from one fifty to two fifty, such that the class would end right before it'd be time to pick up the children at three fifteen. That way the classes shouldn't interfere with school traffic and parents can go to yoga, thereby relieving the stress which will happen once the craziness begins when the kids come home. And then an evening class run from six to seven. Um, they anticipate that on average, only three classes would occur on a regular basis, since it would depend on instructor availability each day.
Um, what we noticed, what, three to, I'm sorry, you said three to six? Students, not nine?
Hmm, no, they, um, three classes a, a day on a regular basis. So, and then if I can just finish on weekends, it's slightly different. Um, and weekends are light, are more popular. Morning classes run from eight to nine and then ten to eleven, and afternoon classes from two to three and four to five. Um, I'm told the parking lot is quite empty on the weekends. Um, and they're hoping the weekend schedule would help local restaurants bring in patrons for brunch and lunch. The problem with restricting class to anything less than nine will make the business really unsustainable. Uh, they anticipate that some classes will only have three to four students, such as, such that those that are more popular and bring in nine students will help average out the costs and expenses versus income overall. So to limit the popular times to six would really make the project unsustainable. And again, it's generally the weekend that is more popular.
Um, the only concern I remember the commission raising during the briefing was just the, to what extent you're overlapping with um, restaurant hours, uh, when parking gets a little tight in the general vicinity of Old Greenwich. And then the other one is uh, Saturday in the late morning gets kind of busy in Old Greenwich as well. And those were the only concerns that the commission raised is to, it seemed that you were working around those tight times. Uh, um, Patrick, do you spend time in Old Greenwich, uh, at any of those? I mean, I know you, did, do you have any further thoughts on when parking is more tight? And then, uh, Mr. Macrae?
Uh, I, I, I just know that. Uh, I I I just know that uh, as Ms. Clouberg mentioned, the the drop off pick off, uh, pick off, sorry, pickup is uh, is a slow point, right? During the day, it's it's hard to get through Sound Beach at that time. Um, and then uh, just good weekends in the summer, you know, it it, you know, people going back and forth in the beach and whatever. But um, probably not a lot of people coming to the yoga studios if they're going to the beach. So um, that's, that's sort of the the general experience we've had.
Okay. Mr. McRae.
Okay, so the rear of the property has a large parking lot that actually I assume is part of the building. Um, so drop off uh, in understanding that the main entrance to this site or to the to the location is actually off that parking lot according to the plan.
Correct.
So any drop off pickup should be focused to the rear in that parking lot because that's that's where it's gonna actually supposed to happen. Understanding that, I think actually we should be looking at what the what the total demand for the parking is for the whole building.
Right.
And getting uh, the survey updated so it represents the existing parking conditions out there now because what I'm looking at on plan and what I'm looking at on line is two different things.
But I don't think anybody's gonna be dropped off for yoga. I don't think that's the plan.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just just saying.
It's the drop off. The idea was they were dropping off the kids at OG School and then going to take yoga.
That's fine. Okay.
Okay.
Um, I think actually something for to understand is because this actually turns its back on on Sound Beach Avenue, what happens to the storefront and is that a viable entrance or is it intended that everybody comes in the back? If that's the case, then what happens to the front storefront? Does it get locked and painted over? Is there a sign out there? Is there signage in the back? So on so forth. I think that's a critical thing to understand because uh, unlike other locations which use their front door, this one is actually focused on the back door.
Um, okay.
Okay. And and like I said, up updated this because actually as as we always see, it's a sea of asphalt out there. And it's kind of painted on there what you should be doing, but it probably could work more efficiently. And actually, understanding what the parking is like needed for the whole building is critical.
So you're asking them to re-stripe the lot, the landlord?
Well, I think actually under, actually understanding how many, how many spaces are out there allotted to the building? How many the building actually required according to uses? We we go this all, we do this all the time. We have this old parking lot that was painted over and striped and who knows what's going on? How many spaces are really out there? And how many spaces are really required for the use of all the uses in the building?
Okay. Alrighty. Um, any other comments from the commission? Ms. Jenkins?
Um, yes, I just want to make sure I understand. In the, in the prepared materials, there are different hours for the weekend classes. You're basically saying that the classes you just told us about are substituting for the Saturday and Sunday classes in the presentation?
Yes, um, there's been a, there was a change in the idea of when the classes would be. So that'll be, that'll be in our final application. So it'll all be corrected. That's gonna change since the original application was made.
Okay, so the weekend classes, instead of being early morning, like the day, the weekday classes will be more in the middle of the day.
Yeah, there um, one at eight o'clock, one at ten o'clock and then um.
Two and two to three.
Two and four.
Yeah. Okay, again, with the minute, the time between to allow changeover and stuff like that.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Barilak.
I I just want to um, say this is, this is my neighborhood. I'm by that place probably more often than any place um in town, six or eight times a week. I cannot recall a time in twenty years when I've seen that lot entirely full. Now, this is, I don't, I don't, I don't mean to dissuade anybody from asking the questions that they're asking, but just.
No, no, that was, that was our sense as well, but we were, we're always very cautious about this.
Appropriately so, as I said, I don't.
Yeah, because I mean, I can send you the emails from the folks who can't find places to park.
Yeah.
So, all right, okay, Ms. Clouberg. So I think you're set. I think you've heard our comments and we'll look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you. Have a good holiday, everyone.
Bye bye. Happy holiday.
Thank you.
All right, our next discussion item, I'll wait till they come in. It's Mr. Hegney. Okay. All right, our next discussion item is a pre-application uh, for an eight thirty G development with a total number of ninety-four units of housing, of which thirty-eight would be affordable, forty percent is affordable, uh, and which would also have retail on the first floor on four parcels on Mason Street, uh, which is also given as Greenwich Avenue, but for now, let's focus on Mason Street and on which the affordable units will all be on the western side of Mason Street and the market rate units would be on the eastern side of Mason Street. And with that, Mr. Hegney, if you would.
And Madam Chair, just at at the start of this application, for the record, I want to say that I've had extensive discussions on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust with this applicant. And so I'm gonna keep my camera off and recuse and keep my mouth shut unless asked a question.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Hegney.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, you've uh, very succinctly uh, described what our application is. Uh, I I'm sure all of you know, this is the former uh Honda store at the bottom of Mason Street at the corner of uh Bruce Park Avenue. Uh, we're looking at utilizing both sides of uh Mason Street. Uh, Pat, if you could bring up the uh, the presentation material and just to show everyone what properties we're talking about. And uh, so uh, my client has also purchased uh, property at uh, it's a, a uh residential portion of uh uh Mason Street. Yeah, if we can go slide two, please, Pat. Uh, the uh, there's a, a multifamily house uh, on the northerly portion but or to the top of the page on the right-hand side, right where uh, Pat's cursor is. Uh, that's now included as part of this. Uh, that was purchased as well. Uh, and uh, going all the way down to uh Bruce Park Avenue. And uh, then on the west side, uh, there's a piece where uh, there's currently the cashmere store. Um, and then uh, it extends also to four oh five Greenwich Avenue, uh, which uh, is part of the property, but is not going to be part of this development. It will remain as is. Uh, the other part that uh, we are exploring is providing a better access for for pedestrians from Mason Street to Greenwich Avenue uh, through the uh, the uh driveway that is located uh, on the north side of the property. Yeah, from there for really from Mason Street uh, over. Yeah. Uh, we have met uh extensively with the uh Housing Trust Fund. Uh, we started with a seven-story building, uh, ninety-three uh, units, thirty percent of which are, would have been affordable under the state median income. Uh, based on discussions we've had with the Housing Trust Fund and sec- and seeking uh, financial support from them in terms of a loan uh, to proceed with the project. Uh, we had uh, eliminated a floor. So this is the seven stories. Uh, if you go to the next one as well, uh, that's also the seven-story uh, building uh, looking east on um uh Mason Street. And the next one is the sixth story, uh, which is what we uh, are proposing uh, to bring in as an application to the commission. Uh, this would have the market rate units in it and the building, which I think is the next slide, Pat. Um, which is five stories on the west side of Mason Street would be the um, uh, the uh affordable units based on eighty percent of the area median income rather than the sixty and eighty percent of the state median income. Uh, as as you, everyone knows, this is a block from the train station, but we think it's an ideal spot uh, to have this development. Uh, there will be a hundred and fifty-five parking spaces between the two properties. Uh, and also um, it will include the um, retail uh, on the first floor for each structure. Uh, we have looked at the sewer capacity uh, in this area and uh, uh, there is a sewer main that runs down Bruce Park Avenue into a trunk line at the bottom of Greenwich Avenue. Uh, and also there is a significant uh stormwater capacity in the town's drainage system here as well.
How come, oh, in the starting the drainage system? Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, there, there, there's been significant improvements in the drainage system uh, in this area and very large uh, what's called connection. Look, you know, a really big um, uh catch basin uh, in the uh, at the bottom of Greenwich Avenue. Um, uh, we also uh, will be reviewing a fire access with the fire marshal. Uh, I know you received a couple of uh, uh correspondence uh, from surrounding property owners uh, as part of uh proceeding with developing a plan to submit to you. Uh, we will be engaging with them and discussing their concerns.
All right, um, you want to take a break, Mr. Hegney, and address the questions for Mr. Yeski and Ms. Jenkins? Before, before.
Please, Madam Chair.
Mr. Yeski, go ahead. You're muted, you're muted.
There's a lot of action in the background here. Um, Mr. Hegney, I mentioned this at the briefing yesterday. Are the two buildings compatible in terms of the quality, the units, uh, parking? Uh, would you notice any difference if you went from one building or another in terms of the overall uh, lifestyle of the buildings? Uh, there may be differences in terms of finishes, but they will be compatible. So if you have a two-bedroom apartment in the uh, market rate that has two bathrooms that the uh, uh affordable uh, unit would have with two bedrooms, also two bathrooms. So we're looking to have them compatible in that fashion. But if you went between the two buildings, would you have a sense that uh, one building is more lavishly furnished uh, in terms of fixtures than the other building?
And that is permissible under state law. It doesn't require the same finishes. It requires comparability.
What's that mean comparability?
That what Mr. Hegney just said about the bedrooms and the sizes, but the finish, as we were saying yesterday, if a market rate has a granite kitchen counter, you don't necessarily do that in the below market. That's not required. You don't finish them out the same way.
Uh, if I could, uh, perhaps it might be helpful, uh, Mr. Yeski to have uh, the principal of the firm, uh Josh Casby, uh, to uh, to speak with you on that. Uh, he has extensive uh,
Mr. Casby, would you raise your hand, please?
He he is in the attendees.
I see him. I think, oh, he's got his hand up. Got him.
Hello, how are you?
Hello, Mr. Casby. So Mr. Hegney believed that you could help us with uh, the question of a required comparability of the units under state law.
Um, so I, I uh, in my, my rental program, the uh, the two bedrooms will have two bathrooms and the one bedroom will have uh, one bathroom. Uh, equivalent to the condo units in terms of the programming that'll be and the amenities in that building. There won't be any significant deviation. The finishers will be different, but uh, overall, the constructability, the quality of the construction uh, and the 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 overall experience will not be uh, in any way deviating in terms of quality.
I, and so what I would ask, and I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Hegney, I'm gonna ask you that on another item on this as well. If you wouldn't mind, um, there's probably case law on that. Uh, and uh, we have the books from the CBA seminars, you know, and we we will look it up. I'm making Ms. Jenkins laugh, but um, we will look up the case law and see if we see anything. But if you, if there is case law, because in this area, eight thirty G, the statute itself is not specific enough, but it says comparability. Uh, I've always understood that to mean, as Mr. Casby just said, unit size and basic construction and that the finishes could be different. But if you can find a confirmation of that, that'd be great. Um, uh, actually, while we're on this topic, Mr. McRae raised something yesterday. I went back and explored eight thirty G's wording in response to his, to this. He had a concern that he had been told in a, in a training class that UConn ran that you cannot separate the sub-market units from the market units. If there is any such restriction, as far as I know, it would have to be in case law because it is not in the statute itself. And so I, I think it would be wise of us just to do a search and I was gonna do it as well of the case law and figure out why somebody would tell Mr. McRae that the units all had to be in the same area. Uh, because I also know from other Fairfield County communities that they have done an in lieu of uh, you know, where the builder put the eight thirty G, the the market, the below market units in a different, completely different location. Now, that was several years ago, many years ago, so maybe that's not in play anymore. But we should double check it just to make sure we're good. I assume the trust checked this. If I know the person who chairs the trust well, um, I know that he is very good at 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 the eight thirty G statute, but we should just make sure that there is no state law, state, no case that would create um, a basis for any kind of an appeal. And and we'll check too, because we've got the books. Um, I think four of us here have the, have all, all the, all the most recent case law on eight thirty G.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Well, that is what we will be presenting to you as part of submitting the final plan.
Okay, so you're gonna give us the case law. If you would be, we would be very happy if before you submitted, you sent us the case law. Because we, I am always interested in just having that guideline before I go in to look at an application. What's the case law that applies to this?
Certainly.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jenkins, before your hand is lowered by the system.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Mr. Hegney and Mr. Casby, um, I'm a little concerned about the um, traffic on that intersection. I'm very, very familiar with that particular uh, intersection. Right now, it can be difficult and of course, there's nothing on either corner. So the sightlines are good because you can kind of peek around the corner because the, there's, there's no development there. From the presentation, it looks like you're going to take the buildings right to the property line, to the sidewalk line. Um, there's a very awkward left on Bruce Park Avenue to go onto Mason Street. There's an equally difficult left off Mason Street to go up the hill on Bruce Park. Um, and again, people come down that hill like crazy and there's very limited visibility around the corner and down Bruce Park Avenue. And particularly when you get a lot of traffic, there's queuing at that Steamboat Road light. So I'm a little concerned about the sightlines um, and the fact that that, again, everyone kind of nips around that corner, especially during rush hour. And there's also a lot of commercial traffic right there as well because it's a good, it's a good shortcut to get onto Mason Street and then get onto Lower Greenwich Avenue as well. So my concern is just the visibility in that intersection with that amount of traffic and people taking um, kind of confusing left turns into each other's uh, right away.
Thank you. Uh, we, we are looking at that. Uh, Mr. Adler has been retained uh, to do a, a traffic study. Uh, so we will be including that as part of what we submit to you. Uh, obviously, there was a very active car dealership there for many years, uh, which generated.
which generated its own traffic. And it was a successful location for Honda, so despite a very small showroom, they were doing a lot of business out of there. So I, we'll, we'll look at that as well.
Yes, thank you. That was my concern.
Thanks.
Mr. Mackrey followed by Mr. Levy.
Mr. Hegney, there's retail on the ground floor of both sides of the street?
Yes.
Okay. Would you consider coming back with another pre-app? Because what I'm seeing in front of me is not sufficient for me to understand a, a good scope of this project. I see elevations, I see hand renderings, I see kind of a site, a little bit of a foreman. But I have no idea really what's going on here.
I'm sorry, Nick. We have been begging applicants to come in with just a back of the envelope and not give us a site plan and not
But this isn't even, this isn't even the back of the envelope. And this is, these are two monumental buildings. Really don't understand exactly what's going on here because
I realize that, but this is exactly what they submitted with this application is exactly what we have been begging people to do on the pre-app to only give us the very general notion of what they're planning to do and then come in with the actual application. Once we've discussed very general terms.
Okay, we've asked applicants before to come in with more in a second pre-app. I'm saying, in my opinion, I do, I do not enough here. There's not enough here for me to have any kind of opinion on this pre-app because it's really the, the details that I need to see are not evident in the presentation.
I give you that. We have asked people to come in and talk to us again on a pre-app because what they have given us has left enough questions that we wanted to further explore with them. But we've never said we need more architectural detail. We have been
I, I didn't see architecture. I'm talking about everything, everything on this site because I really can't tell what's going on.
Mr. Hegney, I leave that to your call. My own sense is we've been pleading for a back of the envelope for ever since we put in the pre-app to please not spend money before you come in and talk to us.
And
Anything else, Mr. Mackrey?
If I could just
But you
respond. I understand what Mr. Mackrey is saying. We've had other projects such as Grant American Center where I think we had four or five pre-apps. What I'll do is discuss this with Mr. Caspi. And we'll see whether we could bring more information in before really jumping into this in, in greater detail or, or whether we think that we're better off just filing it as an application.
Great. You guys decide. I just want to be consistent in our message. Mr. Levy. And you need to unmute. Oh, and Mr. Levy, you couldn't hear us for a while about about an hour ago, you couldn't hear about forty five minutes to an hour ago, you couldn't hear us. We called to you and you couldn't hear us. So we know when that was. So we unseated you, just so you know, because you weren't answering us. Um, okay, go ahead, sir.
All right. Hi, sorry about that. I just thought I it looks like you have two entrances to a garage. And it looks like they're wide enough to for two way traffic. And I, I would like to understand if that's a good idea. And how it actually works on this street with all of this traffic and so and I, I didn't even know if there were, if there was going to be any car traffic coming from the west side of the street as well. So that's the kind of stuff that will be good to tell us about with the traffic report, so. Just a, a better understanding of how everything really works and, and how does, how does all of this traffic bleed into Mason Street and Bruce Park? No less the, the light at the bottom of the avenue kind of thing.
Mr. Hegney. You're just going to address the comments, right?
Well, wait, yes. Later, okay. I, I'm taking notes so that I can make sure that we provide responses to Mr. Levy in the future.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jenkins.
Yes, just quickly, in support of Nick's comment, Mr. Hegney, there is a significant cliff on that hill on Bruce Park Avenue. And obviously, the renderings are, are nice from an architectural point of view, but it makes it look like there's space behind there. That, that is a hill, that is a hill and a half. So it, it would be useful for me to see it in terms of the, the relationship to the existing topography because that, that is straight up the hill.
So
Something I'd like to see.
And that doesn't have to, that would not necessarily be the matter for a pre-app that would be at the time of the application. I'm just a pre-app is supposed to be just a very general non-binding discussion in which we provide some feedback and the applicant asks us questions. When the applicant wants to come in, they can address your question or if Mr. Hegney decides that he likes you guys and wants to accommodate you with another pre-app, he can be our guest. I just want to give him the out because that is how we wrote the pre-app regulation.
Understood, Madam Chair.
Mr. Yesky.
I'll take my shot. Mr. Hegney, I assume that the parking is compatible between the two buildings and it fits the number of units. And I also assume the buildings are sprinkled, right? I, I think it's, I don't know, maybe Nick can tell me that with the code demand sprinkling, this building's pretty tall. So I assume that's the case. Yes, no?
It would actually offer them a, a lot more latitude in life safety issues if it's sprinkled. Distances, egress options, that kind of stuff. Understanding the nature of this, having a garage down below, it would be probably pit plinth construction, which allows them to wood frame above the concrete plinth, which would be the garage and go up multi-stories. So that's one simple way of doing it, but the sprinkler actually would be a great idea.
You couldn't get a fuck around this building right now. You'd have to sprinkle it, right?
Right, correct. You can't get around the back.
So I'm assuming it's sprinkled and I'm assuming they're going to have to go underground a little bit on the parking, right? So I don't know, maybe we'll deal with that in site plan. It's just curious. I'm, I'm looking for things that we're concerned about on an eight thirty G project. That's all.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Yesky. That was an excellent comment because it relates to health and safety.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad I wasn't shot down.
Just, I know, it's just that we keep telling people, please don't give us all these plans and something we're asking. I just wanted to keep this Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So ju- just to give a little bit more information on it, follow up on Mr. Yesky's comment. There'll be some surface parking on the east side and then underground parking there. The west side property currently has extensive underground area that extends really almost the whole lot. So when you look at that parking lot in the front, that's where they had repair facilities beneath the building and beneath the, the parking area for the west side piece. So there would be underground parking there as well.
Yeah, just, just so you remember, the last site application, that exit from that underground parking, there was a question of ownership. I, I don't remember what happened, whether it resulted or not. It looks like it's part of the building, but just, just a thought.
There is both an alley that is owned partially by the properties on Greenwich Avenue and then also by this property, as I recall. That's going back when we were doing the Acura store that you approved a number of years ago.
Hmm. I was very nervous about that one. I, I, just a comment for Mr. Caspi. Yesterday, we discussed the look of this building and, and you, of these two buildings and you know, under state law, we have really very little statute, we have no power to require anything of you. But we are very much hoping that this can be something which elevates that part of town. As opposed, it's not hard, given the fact that you have a car dealership right now, but that elevates it in a way that is consistent with the look and feel of the avenue and some of the development that's gone on in the avenue that has that historic feel. As you know, it's a National Register Historic District Greenwich Avenue. And that we are, we're very hopeful that this can be a very, an attractive building that, that boosts the, the, the value of the area. We do worry, of course, about more traffic and all of that and, but that we're hoping that you will work with us and we'll try to not be too complicated that you'll work with us in that area.
Well, I like, I just like to say thank you for pointing that out. I, in my whole career, spent a lot of time building in landmark districts in New York City and Miami and other places. I pride myself on creating contextual architecture that fits in with the landscape. And I think if I shared the, the, the analysis we did twenty five plus pages with Robert A. Stern to understand all of the historically significant buildings in Greenwich that derived, that was the, the outcome of what you saw in those few pages. Doesn't have that much detail, but I live in town. I'm very, very much extremely passionate about what this is going to look and feel like. My kids are in the town and I don't plan to go anywhere for a long time. I spend a lot of time on the street, so I, I, I'm looking forward to doing something that contributes to the community in a, in a big way. And, and part of that is adding a vibrant retail thoroughfare because I believe the town could use more quality retail and sensible, sensible places for the community to utilize that supports what, what we're trying to do on a long-term basis for the town.
Well, you're, 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 you're saying all the right words. I look forward to the results of those. Any other comments from the commission? We've expressed a concern for fire safety, for traffic safety, for consistency with a historic district and to uplift this area. The case law, I did just find a case on comparability for an eight thirty G that I actually received two years ago from the Department of Housing and I forwarded it just now to, it's a nineteen ninety three case that I've just forwarded to Patrick. I've been looking for it all weekend. I finally found it. So you'll have that, that's a case on the, on the comparability. And again, it only addresses the size and layout. Anything else from the commission?
So if we're assuming this is just going to come back as a final, should we be suggesting things that we'd like to see at that final? Or would Mr. Hegney?
Yes, I would. I think that would be great. I think Mr. Hegney is going to probably come back one time with something more for you. But if, if you want to talk about what you'd like to see, I believe Mr. Caspi is open to hearing as well what we're looking for for style and look.
No, 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 it has to do with the site.
The site, or then go ahead.
Okay, I think actually I'd like to see, I'd like to see the ground floor plans to understand how the building fits in new relationship to the property lines. I would like to see actually site sections, both longitudinally and longitudinally, to understand how the site relates to the street. There are rock outcropping and the properties above and below specifically Greenwich Avenue. I'd like to see a streetscape elevation along Bruce Park Avenue to get a sense of how things work going up the hill. And Ms. Jenkins actually brought that one up. Also, I'd like to get a se- sense of how these buildings work in relationship to the surrounding area. I would suggest, or I would appoint that, that what I'd like to see, if I was going to be doing this, is a massing schedule, a massing model on an aerial, aerial view, three D aerial view, so I can understand the height of these buildings in relationship to everything around it. These are two monumental buildings that are creating a, a new, completely new environment in this section of town. And I really need to understand that. I also like to understand how the relationship, Mr. Hegney, you were talking about, it's not going to change on Greenwich Avenue, but there would be some kind of a pedestrian access. I'd like to know how that, that's going to work. And I, again, I think I said this already, that the, the plans to understand how the parking works underneath both buildings. Mr. Levy, you brought up a, a very good point. You've got entrance, entrance and exit in two locations. Could that be thinned out and its exit and entrance in different locations?
So what I would almost suggest to Mr. Hegney is that he come in with a preliminary application, which is a different kettle of fish than a pre-app. And that he do a preliminary application, which would address the concerns. We can then make modifications and, and move it and we could move it in short orders. Once you've, a short order, once you've got this, I'm just trying to keep the distinction between the, the three sections, or the two sections, three sections really of our zoning regulations, what's required under six fifteen and what's required for the pre-app. Mr. Levy.
Oh, here we go. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Caspi was nice enough to broach the idea that he, he wants to fit into the character of, of the townscape. So on that regard, I think that there's something about this sketch that shows a the eastern corner of the site at the that, that, that long building is really broken up into masses, which I think is a very successful idea. And would go a long way to give the character of a much more acceptable scale to this downtown area. But one of the, the issues about creating two substantial buildings across the street from each other is this cavernous effect, you know, there's, there's a the echoing of traffic going through is, is going to surprise everyone because it's, it's really not present anywhere else, but these buildings are tall enough and close enough together that this, that there's going to be that kind of cavernous effect like in, in, in New York City in the larger metropolitan area. And also, the, the, the retail area is going to be substantially different in that you're going to have a different quality of, of light and sound because these buildings are taller and the light will not penetrate the same way as in Greenwich Avenue where the buildings are one, two, and even three stories. So those are things to consider and understand the impact of it. Especially in that you're interested in, in fitting into the fabric of, of town, but the, the breadth and extent of the, the massing of, of these two buildings together, I would say is a, a counterpoint to, to what does exist there and is really quite different and much more of an urban statement. There are some elements of this Mason Street looking north rendering that project a much softer feeling about this particular project. And I hope that that's much more of what you're trying to achieve here than the elevations that you have shown subsequent to these drawings. This particular drawing, which is much more less descriptive and, and certainly very, a, a real, a very massive building and probably the most massive building in the downtown. And the and you know, the and you know, the, the, in order to bring people over here as in, to attract people to um use the retail, there has to be something which draws them there. Um, because um, there's really not much there otherwise. Um, and I think that the more you can think about how to treat the streetscape, uh creating a little bit more light and air um and, and um uh pedestrian uh and how the pedestrian uh will move along uh the sidewalk uh will uh be uh as important as anything that you do uh in this project to draw people there. Because if you have a, a building which uh Mr. McRae had mentioned, which is as tall as these buildings uh uh seventy feet or sixty feet, uh this, this sense of, of, of um of imposition that, that on, on the pedestrian walking through that is gonna be substantial compared to uh the lovely um um light-filled um uh Greenwich Avenue that people enjoy so much.
Mr. Levy, I think you, that, that issue that you're bringing up, it's, it's very, it's, it, it understanding of the nature of the height of the both the buildings and their adjacency to other across the, the, the street. When you say a light and air, I think that would be, as I see it from the limited stuff I have here, extremely narrow. Because you have the height of both buildings and as, and they face east-west. So as the sun comes around, you'll get maybe an hour or so of street uh, uh light on Mason Street. But the, the buildings themselves will, will cast shadows on Mason Street all day long. Depending, it doesn't really matter how the, uh, the sun moves on it. So uh for the retail, if you're looking for light and air, it's going to be incredibly limited. It's not like a broad boulevard, boulevard or something, um, say in Manhattan where there's a real good width. Um, and this, because they're east-west, actually I think would be a real detriment to getting light in there.
All right.
And it's not Greenwich Avenue.
Okay, if you guys could just tell Mr. Hegney what feedback you are providing him, because right now it's kind of a dialogue between two architects, so if you could like spin it back.
I think, I think it's, I think. Uh, Mr. Hegney, I think actually that's a, that's an important thing to actually, in terms of what I was saying before about street elevations, um site sections, I think a section, I think a section literally from like Ridge Street up above through the site down to Greenwich Avenue, because I think getting, understanding that, that the thing I always talk about, that curb to cornice ratio here. Um, how this, these buildings actually rise above the street, rise above Greenwich Avenue, rise above Ridge Street is an important factor for us to understand. Um, and I think actually in, you know, understanding that the narrowness of Mason Street at that point, seeing how the buildings relate to each other is, is an important aspect to this.
Okay. And you know, again, reminding you guys, you don't, I know I'm like the statutory person here, you know, reminding everybody of laws and regulations. But again, this is an eight thirty G and Mr. Caspi is going to, is going to accommodate us out, out of a desire to do the right thing for the community. But our, the burden of, is on us to prove where there are issues for health and safety. So if you think there's inadequate ventilation or inadequate lighting, that would be one thing. But otherwise, we are, we are asking Mr. Caspi to help us out by making the building as attractive and fit in as well as possible. But our obligation here is to focus on health and safety issues that exceed the need for affordable housing. Just reminding you. Okay.
I have a, I have a question about that. Uh, so understanding, we wanna want them to be as attractive as possible.
Right.
Would we consider sending this to A R C for their thoughts when the time comes?
Um, I think we would. I would like to see the application first.
I agree.
All right. And then if Mr. Caspi and Mr. Hegney are willing to go to A R C and are willing to incorporate the input, I would love to have A R C weigh in. However, that has not always gone smoothly with an eight thirty G. So they have to indicate to us that they really are open to hearing at least the input and not rejecting it out of hand. I'm just saying that we have had instances where I think Mr. Hegney is familiar with those where that has occurred. I believe you bear those scars, Mr. Hegney.
Only a few.
Right. So if you two, if you as the applicants are open to that, we, we would like to see the application first and then we would send it to A R C. But with your assurances that you are in fact open to getting some architectural input and that you're willing to go there.
I, I, I think Mr. Caspi has made clear, he, he is looking to create a, a true quality development here uh that will be something that all residents of the town will find uh, uh an asset uh to the downtown area. And um, and based on his past experience, I, I have no doubt that he can accomplish that.
Okay. All right. Anything else from the commission?
No.
All right. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application on Mason Street? Uh, this is all right, our first speaker is Rich. And anybody else from the public who wishes to speak on the affordable housing application uh on Mason Street, please raise your virtual hand. Okay, I okay, all right. Rob is coming in and Rich went away. That's strange. And the next person um is Greg, Greg McLaughlin. So go ahead, Rob, if you would unmute and then you will be followed by Greg McLaughlin.
Okay, Ms. Alblun, am I on?
Yes, you are.
Okay, great. Um, uh, my husband and I, uh, we own property at sixty-two Ridge Street. And we submitted a um a letter to you on December eleventh, and I'd just like to read that into the record. Um, and something that concerns me very much is that none of the um Planning and Zoning Commission mentioned anything in regard to environmental concerns, especially with what has happened um with the Infinity dealership. Um, so if I could read my uh, my letter and my husband Daniel McCurdy's letter into the record, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Okay, um, we are writing regarding the pre-application review submitted by Mason Street Partners LLC. We are abutting the property that is proposed, uh the proposed site for a six-story building to provide more than sixty units on the east side of Mason Street, none of which will be affordable or assisted living units, and a second five-story building on the western side of Mason Street, which is which it is proposed will contain all of the affordable housing units, which seems odd that the building without affordable housing units would qualify for section eight thirty G treatment. Both buildings will be, will abut Bruce Park Avenue and will be a half block away from Steamboat Road, a block from Greenwich Avenue with an additional building in the development located on Greenwich Avenue and two blocks from Arch Street. As you know, Mason Street, which is merged with Millbank Avenue about two hundred feet north of the proposed development, is a major thoroughfare from East Putnam Avenue as vehicles make their way to Steamboat Road and Arch Street for access to I ninety-five, north and south. We understand that prior traffic safety studies by the town have recorded this. The intersection of Mason Street and Bruce Park Avenue is impassable during much of the weekend, weekday, and most weekends because of the heavy traffic congestion, which creates great, pardon me, great peril for pedestrians walking to Greenwich Avenue, down Bruce Park Avenue, Millbank Avenue, and Mason Street, which we do multiple times each day. You are also aware of the thirty-unit building nearing completion at two fifty-five Millbank Avenue, the corner of Millbank and Havemeyer, with approximately seventy parking spaces for residents. Between the Millbank Development and the proposed Mason Street Development, approximately two hundred and twenty-five additional vehicles will be coming and going down streets that are all, already impassable much of the day. Again, the dangers to pedestrians like us are very real, given the drastic increase in increased amount of traffic in a downtown area in which walking is being encouraged. It creates safety issues that ultimately the town is liable for if it fails to mindfully work to minimize such hazards to all travelers, whether they are on foot, bicycle, or vehicles. Be assured, we are not opposed to affordable housing and the benefits it brings in terms of economic development and diversity. But the extraordinarily rapid expansion of dense housing in downtown Greenwich cannot ignore the safety and health of residents. The present pre-application submitted by Mason Street Partners is woefully deficient on details. For example, the documents provide no insight into the placement of these massive buildings on the proposed parcels. With the east side structure proposed to be six stories in height plus parking, there must be ready access for fire trucks with ladders to access the rear of the building and turn around, which likely means very wide fire lanes on both sides of the building and the rear of the building. The back of the east side property is a forty-foot-tall rock and concrete retaining wall, which is on the applicant's property. It is their responsibility to regularly maintain the integrity of that retaining wall in perpetuity and to provide access to rescue vehicles with the ability to fight fires within their six-story-high building and evacuate residents living in the six-story structure. This would require, require seventy to eighty-foot ladders. Moreover, without such fire lanes on both sides of the six-story building and a wide fire lane in the rear area between the building and the retaining wall, there would be no access for fire crews to fight fires or rescue residents in the four houses on the ridge that abuts the property, including ours. There is no alternative access.
Mr. Anderson. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, ma'am.
You went way over your time. Um, we do have, all of us have your, your letter.
And it's funny because now I'm, I'm, I'm going to the environmental remediation, which is the most important part that, that none of you have brought up.
All right. Okay. So yes, and I wasn't aware. Okay. Do you guys mind if he talks about whatever happened at the Infinity? Cause I don't know anything about it.
I don't either.
Okay. So if you would go ahead, but just ta- talk to us like people, um, you don't have to.
Sorry, I'm reading from the letter that my husband wrote, so.
So, okay. So tell us about the environmental issue any way you wish to.
In addition, the town has been notified by H R P Associates, Inc. Regarding Environmental Remediation at three fifteen Millbank Avenue. See Exhibit one of my letter. This letter provides notice of remediation at three fifteen Millbank Avenue in Greenwich that will begin in the summer of twenty twenty-four. It states, "Environmental investigations at the site have identified the presence of soil impacted by leachable lead, arsenic, polycyclic aromatic hydro- hydrocarbons, and extractable total petroleum hydrocarbons uh due to historical operations." The letter continues, "In addition to soil removal, one or more environmental use restrictions may be reported on site, land, records to effectively protect human health and the environment from the hazards of pollution by prohibiting the future use of the site for residential development and ensure that the site building remains in place to render soil environmentally isolated and/or render soil inaccessible as defined in the Connecticut Remediation Standard Regulations. Soil remedial excavation is tentatively scheduled to be completed in the summer of twenty twenty-four and E U R placement is tentatively scheduled to be completed by the winter of twenty twenty-six." The site, as referenced in the H R P letter, is only fifty-eight yards from the six-story building proposed by the applicant. You recall that Mason Street and Millbank merge at approximately this site. The proposed building is downhill from the site and adjacent to it. It seems highly probable that contamination would have flowed downhill between the known contaminated property and the properties at and below two seventy-nine Mason Street over the decades. Even if it did not, the proposed site of the six-story building is on land that was first a Studebaker Automobile Sales and Service Site beginning in the nineteen fifties, before it became a Honda's Honda Sale and Service Site in nineteen ninety-five until it moved in twenty twenty-two. So for approximately seventy years, the site has been an au- an automobile and sales and service site, much like the site being remediated at three fifteen Millbank. At a minimum, to protect the health and safety of current and future workers, residents and neighbors, all the land proposed to be developed must be carefully and comprehensively evaluated by H R P, given their familiarity with the current environmental issues and assessed as to what environmental risks exist and whether the property is suitable for the soils to be disturbed or residential development is possible, given environmental hazards, if any.
Well, thank you very much. Um, you are absolutely correct that the history of this site qualifies it for um of, that it would be mandatory uh and expected that a phase one environmental analysis be performed uh because it has been a uh car dealership and a car repair uh location. And that would be, we should have said it. You're absolutely right. We should have brought it up. Uh, normally in these situations, the buyer of the property is given, is given some sort of guarantee that the soil will be remediated if necessary um by the previous owner.
Uh, yes, and the, the Infinity dealership though is being barred from doing any residential development on their property because of the, the.
Yes. So Mr. Mr. Anderson, we have other examples of that in town. If you ever go to the Cos Cob Park, it is a very similar situation. Uh, it was not able to be developed as wa- as it was due to site contamination and that's, it was capped. But that's why it's a park today.
Right.
We can't intrude on what Mr. Caspi's purchase conditions are. However, we will ask for the phase one um evaluation. Uh, but thank you very much for reminding us because I saw your letter, knew that it had been a dealership and didn't think to say anything, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Alblun.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, our, I believe we now have um Mr. McLaughlin, who is well, I, oh, no, I guess he went away. No, here he is. Okay. All right, Mr. McLaughlin, if you would please proceed. And again, if you would keep your, try to keep yourself to the three minutes and if you would unmute. Um, we gave Mr. Anderson a lot of time. If you would unmute, Mr. McLaughlin. Mr. McLaughlin, if you would unmute.
How about now?
There you go.
Okay. Uh, I don't have as much to say as Dan does.
Combined letter from you both.
Right. Uh, I am also a resident of that neighborhood. I live on Ridge Street directly behind this property.
Yep.
I am very concerned about the safety of walking down past it as I go down that hill to the train station. Uh, you have to cross uh Steamboat at one point right there at the base of Millbank. Uh, it's, it, it's dangerous the way it is now with wide open space.
Yes.
The Millbank and Mason Street connection uh virtually takes all the traffic that goes north, that's going back down south on Greenwich Ave. So I just think it, you're gonna have a tremendous amount of additional pedestrian traffic. Uh, and especially combining this property with the property at the end of Ridge Street at the uh, at the top of the hill and the whole building that is going to be taking place where the train station is. Since that's all I believe gonna be demolished and rebuilt. Um, I, I'm just very concerned about the safety of pedestrians.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. That will be, that will be analyzed because that is an issue that rises to the eight thirty G.
Right.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else wish to speak on this application? No. All right. Um, well, that was good. Um, Mr. Caspi, you're not obliged to comment on your purchase. So on the kind, on what your contract looks like. So um, we will obviously ask that the, the safety issues with pedestrians is is a point that will be addressed in any event. Um, we all know that it's an issue crossing there. Like any of us who cross that part of Davis, I think it changes to Davis there, right? The street?
No.
No, it's Bruce Park, by the way.
Bruce Park Avenue.
Bruce Park.
All the way down, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so it, crossing, crossing there is always tricky because you don't know where the cars are coming from. Okay, so it, but that's one of the things that D P W would address. Anything else from the commission for the applicant? Any other questions from the applicant for us? No.
Uh, no, I think you've given us a lot of uh good feedback of what I think the value of these pre-apps is. Uh, and we'll determine uh as we. And we'll determine as we move forward whether a, an additional pre-app hearing or preliminary or a final is the appropriate way to go. We'll, we'll review that with staff before we take any one of those steps.
Okay, all right, well, thank you both, and thank you again, Mr. Casby, for your willingness to work on, on the visual. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a pleasure to meet you. Appreciate your time. Thanks for everything.
Okay. I would like to move approval of the minutes of October third, two thousand twenty-three. All of us were in attendance.
Second.
Mr. Lowe has seconded. I would take a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I hereby move approval of the minutes of October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Levy and I cannot vote on this. We both missed parts of the meeting. Mr. Levy left at eight twenty-three, and I was gone for an hour after seven oh five. Second by Mr. Lowe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I would like to move approval of the November second minutes of two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Levy was not here for the entire meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And no nays, right, on any of those? No nays, everybody liked the minutes. Okay. So now we can go into decision mode. Where do you guys want to start? We have Greenwich American. We have Eagle View. And we have the Brunswick School.
Uh, King, the Fairview thing, too.
Louvers. Louvers.
And, no, no, Fairview, we, we was in the public hearing, and Fairview. So where do you guys want to start?
At the beginning.
So you want to start with Fairview? Or do you want to go backwards?
No, just start. Start anywhere.
Beginning, okay. Sometimes people want to go backwards. I don't know. I let you guys make those big decisions.
Just start anywhere. Go in the middle if you want. It's fine.
Okay, yeah.
All right, Fairview, there we go.
Rogers and Hammerstein said, start at the very beginning.
Start at the very beginning. Fairview Country Club.
Uh, twelve forty-one King Street, application P L P Z, twenty twenty-three, four six eight, final site plan. Special permission key applicant seeking approval to construct a parking system with a louvered roof structure across the entirety of the site's pool terrace seating area with an increase in the overall site's volume by nineteen thousand, uh, hundred and forty cubic feet per section sixteen seventeen, uh, six seventeen, et cetera, the building B Z R in the R A four zone. Whereas required property, uh, the required property came before the commission is a pre-application on eleven fourteen twenty-three. Under file P L P Z, twenty twenty-three, four two six, and the commission has determined that the application does not require A R S review. The commission finds that Wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire on eleven fifteen twenty-three indicating no action required. Therefore, motion to approve the site plan noting the following. All previous approvals and decisions for the site shall be adhered to, and the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lowe has seconded. Seated on, seated on this application are the regulars. Uh, Mr. Yaski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Lowe?
Aye.
Mr. MacRae?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five nothing. We now go to the Brunswick School. Mr. Levy, you're not leaving us yet, right?
No.
Okey dokey. All right, Brunswick School.
Okay, uh, ninety-five, one hundred, Mar Avenue, final site plan, special permit, P L P Z, twenty twenty-three, four hundred. Even number. Applicant seeking to approval to make renovations to the east side of the property, including circulation paths, outdoor classroom space, relocating a crosswalk from the east to the west side of the campus, and revisions to the previously approved but not yet constructed additions to the education building of properties located in the R twenty, R six zones. Whereas on, uh, ten twenty-five twenty-three, the applicant received a variance of allowable roof height by the Z B A under P L P Z, P L Z E, twenty twenty-three, oh three eight. Commission finds that zoning issue comments on twelve twenty-nine twenty-one requesting compliance with section six twelve of the B Z R. Sewer division issue comments, uh, ten twenty, twelve six twenty-three requesting applicants to submit a signed letter of acknowledging receipt of P N Z comments. Engineering drainage issue comments dated, uh, twelve seven twenty-three requesting recent middle prior to zoning permit. Conservation issue comments dated, uh, twelve eight twenty-three indicating recommendations to the plan. Wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire on ten twelve indicating no action required. And A R C issued minutes, uh, minutes dated, uh, oh one nineteen twenty-three for no further review necessary. Okay, therefore, motion to approve site plan special permit noting the following, uh, pursue division comments. The applicant has submitted an acknowledgement letter dated, uh, twelve eleven twenty-three. Prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall submit a comprehensive landscape plan for the west side campus location indicating vegetation replacement species, caliber, and count. Planning and zoning staff to review for compliance with the building's own regulations, uh, landscape regulations. Mr. Wells, did you want to add anything about, uh, for E M A C or energy issues?
Hold on just a second. Mr. Wells is not seated on this application, so he can.
Okay, great. Okay.
I would just say that the applicant has been asked to address the input of the, of the, of, of E M A C and shall coordinate with staff, uh, staff accordingly.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, all previous approvals and decisions of the site, uh, sites shall be adhered to. And the applicant is to address, uh, any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Awesome. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Lowe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Yaski?
Aye.
Mr. MacRae?
Aye.
Albin is also an aye. And with that, we go to Eagle View Holdings. My apologies, this is a mammoth. As to the application of Eagle View Holding LLC for a preliminary site plan to demolish an existing two hundred and seventeen-bed skilled nursing facility and construct a five-story, two hundred and fifteen-unit set-aside development pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General.
Uh, Madam Chair, can you move your microphone down a little bit?
It's about as good as it gets.
No, that's much clearer. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so do you want me to start over again?
No.
Okay. Uh, eight thirty G of the general statues, where thirty percent of the proposed units would be designated affordable per state statues with parking for two hundred and ninety-four vehicles on a fifteen-point-eight-nine-three acres parcel located at eleven sixty-five King Street in the R A four zone. Whereas on seven twenty-four twenty-three, the I W W A approved this application with both the standard, with both standard and special conditions. Whereas on ten eighteen twenty-three, D P W issued the, issued the following comments regarding the proposed plans. That a soil analysis of the proposed dredge material from the two ponds must be submitted. That highway and engineering division staff will verify adequate line of sight is provided in both directions. Whereas that the applicant shall respond to or address all comments from Beta Group, Inc. as appropriate. That the applicant shall respond to or address all comments from the Town of Greenwich Engineering Division as appropriate and revise both the drainage plan and the site plans as requested by D P W. Whereas D P W and the commission's traffic consultants have commented on the traffic analysis provided. Study intersection side streets noted a failing level of service would only occur during the busiest thirty minutes of the peak hours when King Street volumes are heaviest. However, no documentation or analysis of different time periods is provided to verify that other times of day will not experience significant delay. The applicant was asked to address the degraded level of service in the build condition at the side streets for both study intersections by evaluating mitigation options. It is noted that the striping and signage plan of the site of, uh, shows two egress lanes from the project site, a right-turn lane and a shared through-left lane. However, the analysis for the build condition shows only one single combined left-through-right lane. Okay, now, we're gonna go next to the, um, housing specialist. Oh, one more thing. It was also noted that the applicant shall coordinate with Greenwich Public Schools regarding school bus pickup and drop-off. Whereas the planning and zoning, uh, housing specialist reviewed the provide affordability plan and declaration of restrictions and, uh, requested that certain revisions be, be made to comply with statutory obligations. And here comes all the good part. Whereat, on eleven twenty-nine twenty-three, Vincent Kopicki, Commissioner, Department of Environmental Facilities for Westchester County, wrote the applicant with a copy to Greenwich Planning and Zoning stating, "There is no indication in the public record that any notification to the Westchester County Department of Environmental Facilities has been made regarding the proposed redevelopment based upon the public record filings, including the initial architectural plan dated August second, two thousand twenty-one, and the initial site plan dated August thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. The application seeks authorization to redevelop the property from its current use as a two hundred and seventeen-bed skilled nursing facility to a two, and this is important, this is what they have in their letter, a four hundred and twenty-four-bedroom apartment complex, increasing the building height to five stories plus the roof deck and adding four hundred new trees. Please be advised that any alleged assignment or transfer of the sewer discharge agreement, S D A, other than any that has been fully authorized in accordance with the S D A terms is invalid. Per the S D A, sewage discharge from the facility is restricted to fifty thousand gallons per day combined. The S D A dated January twenty-fourth, two thousand, has a base sewage calculation of thirty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty gallons per day, while a four hundred and twenty-four-bedroom apartment complex has a base sewage calculation of sixty-three thousand, six hundred gallons per day. Please note that these calculations do not include the other portion of the facility, the nursing home. Additionally, the S D A prohibits the establishment or growth of any structure, tree, or other object upon the portion of the real prod property that is subject to fourteen CFR Part seventy-seven. The public records do not indicate any consideration or assessment of fourteen CFR Part seventy-seven has been conducted or that the County of Westchester Department of Public Works and Transportation, on behalf of the Westchester County Airport, the county's Director of Aviation, have been contacted to determine the compliance for the proposed height and landscaping addition. Moreover, the Greenwich Planning Department file does not include any record of a notification to the F A A Administration, submission of an F A A form, or any legal opinion that such notification is not required. Upon information and belief, the proximity of the proposed development to Westchester County Airport requires filing for an air traffic safety analysis. Further, there is no evidence the Greenwich Planning Department file of any referral or notification to the county's commissioner of planning." So that was all the letter from Westchester, which we are incorporating into our decision. Whereas the commission notes that on October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, the applicant was granted an extension of the S D A terms until December thirty-one, two thousand sixty-four, and that this term will end prior to the forty-year period required by the Connecticut State Statute eight thirty G subsequent to a granting of certificate of occupancy. Whereas the commission further notes that the site's existing S D A with Westchester can be unilaterally canceled by the county for payment default with a thirty-day notice. Whereas the applicant has not submitted a plan for wastewater management through the projected term of the eight thirty G requirement or a contingency plan should Westchester service be terminated prior to twelve thirty-one sixty-four. Whereas absent an operational agreement with Westchester County for this specific facility, the proposal has no designed or approved sewage system. Whereas the applicant should provide plans and studies that show the possible location of a code-compliant onsite wastewater, wastewater system in the absence of a sewage agreement with Westchester County. Whereas the commission finds that the absence of a valid sewer discharge agreement with Westchester County or other legally compliant means of sewage disposal create a major health and safety risk for residents of this proposed development. Whereas the commission further finds the aforementioned health and safety risk to residents exceeds the need for affordable housing in the town of Greenwich. Therefore, be it resolved that this application is hereby moved to final with the following requirements for the final submission. The applicant shall address all outstanding D P W and traffic issues. The applicant shall revise and correct the affordability plan documents pursuant to the comments of the P N Z housing specialist. Applicants shall provide formal written confirmation. Westchester County has agreed to the proposed development, including an extension of the S D A term to be equal to or greater than the forty years required after C O by the Connecticut State Statute eight thirty G. The applicant shall obtain a revision to the notification of termination clause of the S D A to provide sufficient time for the applicant to complete installation of a code-compliant onsite sewage disposal system. The applicant shall increase the gallons per day allowance in the S D A with Westchester County to cover the base sewage demand of the proposed development as well as a cushion for any future overage, including that due to inflow and infiltration in the out ears. The applicant shall obtain a revision to the S D A assignment clause such that the agreement remains intact should the development change ownership in the future. The applicant shall also meet all conditions imposed by the County of Westchester Department of Public Works and Transportation on behalf of the Westchester County Airport, the county's Director of Aviation, and the Federal Aviation Administration. Proof of these conditions and their satisfaction to be provided, and their satisfaction is to be provided in writing to Greenwich Planning and Zoning. The applicant shall provide, provide a revised landscape which incorporates any aviation-related considerations. The applicant shall submit, uh, no, I got that part. Um, the full fees, well, I'll say it again in case I missed it. Shall submit a full assessment feasibility and construction plan for a state-of-Connecticut compliant onsite sewage treatment facility, including soil test results, specific placement area, and a time projection for the installation. Okay. And any other outstanding department comments that should be addressed prior to the final submission. Does anybody have any adds or deletions?
Madam Chair, can you just read me the assignment provision again with Westchester?
The assignment, so what I was thinking, Mary, as I was writing this, is right now they allow no assignment, but if somebody else was operating the facility, I'm looking for it right now, we're to.
It's about halfway through, I think, halfway through the Westchester discussion.
Yeah, yeah, hold on, hold on. Okay, so, um, I said a revision to the S D A assignment clause such that the agreement remains intact should the proposed development change ownership. That work for you?
Um, it does, although I'm not sure it'll work for Westchester.
Well, they can come back on the final and tell us that they can't do it.
Okay. But. Yeah, I just, you know, any, any assignment could mean assignment to a shell company that can't stand behind it. Westchester will just go now.
So if they refuse the, I'm thinking the other option they would do is say, hey, you're gonna change ownership. Here's what you need to do so that you don't lose your sewage. That's what we're working for, right?
Okay, it'll, it'll probably do for now and, and has to be addressed.
And then they'll change it on the final, but what we're looking for is, um, a lot of these folks. um, a lot of these folks sell a development. Once the eight thirty G has expired, I've learned this from Bob. They, they are thinking about the residual value and at the time of the residual value, they may go to sell it. So in the out years, we're looking for somebody to, somebody to be for there is still to be coverage for the residents, however we word that. Anything else?
That was all I had.
Okay. All right. Based on that, do I have a second?
Second.
And I'm sorry, no, no, you can't. That's why I'm doing this. Oh, no.
I second.
You are, yeah, you are seated. I'm sorry. I get confused. All right. So, uh, Mr. McRae has seconded. Now, for the votes, Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Yesky?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five, nothing. All right, now it's Nick's turn again. We go to Greenwich American.
Okay, uh, this will be text amendment B E X fifty R. Overlay Zone PLPZ twenty twenty-three, three zero three. This amendment seeks to modify section six one one six of the towns building zone regulations by creating a new overlay zone. B E X fifty R that will allow residential uses in the B E X fifty zone. The commission finds that in a memo dated, uh, eight twelve twenty-three, Westcog staff opined that the proposal may be of interest to the town of North Castle, New York, due to the additional persons using the roads to access the site. The proposal should be forwarded to their highway and planning departments for their opportunity to comment. Uh, the suggested revisions are in keeping with objective, uh, one point two A for, one point four A. Objective two and objective four point one and four point two of the two thousand nineteen P O C D. Therefore, motion to approve the text amendment as proposed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And seated on this application again, um, is Albin, McRae, Jenkins, Low and Yesky. Uh, Ms. Jenkins has seconded. Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Jenkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. Yesky?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five, nothing. All right, um. Now we go to Greenwich American Inc. for the finals, for the preliminary site plan and special permit. Um, before Nick makes that motion, uh, we did receive an email from North Castle, but we cannot incorporate what it says because we had already closed the application. So I believe Nick will just make general reference to continuing dialogue, which we were going to do anyway, and just ask the applicant to do that as they move to final. Um, I believe Nick's planning that, so maybe he'll surprise me, maybe he won't. I don't know. Go ahead, Nick.
Full of surprises. Wow, what are we doing here? One American Lane, application PLPZ twenty twenty-three, three zero two for preliminary site plan special permit. Applicant is seeking approval to construction, construct a one hundred ninety-eight unit residential cluster development pursuant to section six thirteen through section six fifteen et cetera of the town of Greenwich Building Zone Regulations on a hundred and fifty-four acre property located at One American Lane in the B E X fifty R zone. Whereas the applicant has received a zoning text amendment under file PLPZ twenty twenty-three, three zero three, creating uh, the new B E X fifty R zone. Uh, the applicant has chosen to provide a contribution to the Housing Trust Fund as prescribed in the B E X fifty R text amendment in pursuant to title eight, chapter twenty-one, twenty-four, section eight, two, I of the Connecticut General Statutes. Commission finds that, uh, in a memo dated eight twelve twenty-three, staff opined that the proposal may be of interest to the town of Newcastle, New York, and due to additional persons using their roads to access the site. The proposal should be forwarded to their highway and planning departments for opportunity to comment. Zoning, uh, issued comments that, that the proposed development depends on the text amendment and rezoning is to comply with the regulations. As proposed, they would not meet the B E X fifty zone criteria. Engineering drainage issued comments ten thirty twenty-three indicating Greenwich concerns to be addressed prior to final site plan approval. Engineering traffic issued comments ten twenty-seven twenty-three indicating transportation concerns to be addressed prior to final site plan approval. Uh, Beta issued comments on, uh, one eleven twenty-one indicating concerns on outstanding issues. Conservation issued comments dated twelve thirty, twenty, uh, indicating comments to the plan. And Wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire on seven twenty-one twenty-three stating uh, a permit is required. Therefore, excuse me, motion to move to final site plan noting the following. Prior to final site plan, the applicant shall supply a full documentation drawing sets for a complete analysis of zoning compliance with the two thousand twenty-three building zone regulations. Prior to final site plan, the applicant shall secure the necessary inland wetlands and water courses agency permits. Prior to final site plan, the applicant shall satisfy or D P W Engineering Division concerns on drainage. Prior to final site plan, the applicant shall satisfy all D P W Traffic Division concerns with emphasis on Route twenty-two, twelve in New York State, uh, and Orchard Road in sections in New York State and Locust Bedford and Clifton Road Intersections in Connecticut. Prior to final site plan, the applicant shall confirm that the onsite wastewater plant has the capacity for the current site uses proposed residential uses and future accessory uses. Prior to final site plan, the applicant shall confirm alternate sewage treatment plans if this existing onsite treatment plant would become overtaxed or out of compliance. Uh, prior to final site plan, the applicant shall discuss and coordinate with the Greenwich Public Schools issues concerning bus routes and schedules onsite pickup and drop off locations. In addition to the applicant shall demonstrate onsite vehicle queues for parents that wait for their children in personal cars at the bus stop locations. Uh, the applicant, um, shall continue to coordinate with planning and zoning staff and New York State municipal officials on any and all issues New York State, uh, municipal officials may have. Uh, the applicant shall provide a brief commenting on the use of power backup generators, locations and fuel use. The applicant shall provide a comprehensive construction phasing plan addressing excavation and rock removal concurrent use of the site during construction and site development. Access egress, parking, it shall be clearly indicated during all phases of construction. Uh, the applicant shall meet with the Greenwich Fire Department and Greenwich Police Department to review emergency service coverages, uh, coverage measures and verify that those particular aspects can be adequately addressed. Uh, the applicant shall meet with the Greenwich Fire Department to review onsite water availability combat to combat structured fires. The applicant shall endeavor to minimize high maintenance open lawn areas and look to revise the landscape plans to include natural meadow and additional infill wooded areas. Prior to final site plan, the applicant shall appear for, before the A R C to review the following for all new construction renovation or alterations planned at the project site. Uh, design consistency, building massing and geometry, building materials, samples and colors. Windows, window cuts, size, layout, subdivision and detail. Exterior residential doors, cuts, size and detail, may seem to be detailing cable end and rake details, site wayfinding sign program, lighting plans and fixture specifications, uh, noting the new lighting regulations. And landscape and hardscape plans noting the new landscape regulations. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental concerns.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, um. Ms. Jenkins has seconded. Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. Yesky?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five, nothing. Nice job on that one.
Nice job, Nick.
Yeah, that was good. Nice job. I was hoping you'd get all the architectural minutia on that one. I'm sorry, not minutia, big picture items.
The substantial points on architecture.
Very good, and, and, and a lot of the stuff that you added was excellent. Um, okay, folks, uh, we're done.
Good night.
Happy New Year, right?
I, I kept thinking I was going to try and get us together for Christmas, something. We'll do it in January. We're shooting for something.
When I'm around. We'll celebrate the solstice.
We'll celebrate the solstice. My favorite holiday is the Three Kings Day. We can celebrate Three Kings.
Hey, I got a better one. I have a better one for you.
What's that?
Uh, if it can wait. I have a showcase gig on the tenth of March that I think you'll all enjoy. You can get together at the bar before we do everything.
Did somebody say bar?
Did somebody say bar? I know. Well, um, I'm not, the bar's not going to wait, Bob.
No, it's not. That's true.
All right. Jan nine.
January nine.
Yeah, um, and I'm probably going to, I'm going to miss the, the briefing on the eighth. But I'll be there on the ninth.
Well, we'll miss you.
I'm, I, I will be, I will be.
I'll be listening. I'll probably be listening, but I won't be able to speak probably. Um, okay, you guys, so have a great. Yeah, right.
I'm sorry, I didn't say that emphatically. Well, you'll be missed.
That's better.
Be missed.
Look, I'm turning red. Have a great Christmas and a happy Hanukkah and everything.
Happy holidays to everybody who's listening to us at home.
And happy holidays to everybody who's listening to us at home. Alrighty. Okay, bye-bye, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.